The November meeting of the Suffolk Planning Commission will now come to order. I will call on Commissioner.
Heavenly Father, we come to you today to ask for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting.
We ask that you will be in our midst. Help us to engage in meaningful discussion. Allow us to continue to grow closer as a group and nurture the bonds of community. Fill us with your grace to make appropriate decisions that will affect our city. Help us to be able to review the matters at hand in a reasonable and thoughtful way. Let us continue to give thanks for the many blessings that you have bestowed upon us. Guide each one of us so that we can make fruitful contributions as we work for the city to accomplish our goals this day. Amen.
Mr. Wyer, would you call the roll, please? Yes, sir. Commissioner Creakmore.
Here.
Commissioner Eberwine.
Here.
Commissioner Edwards.
Here.
Commissioner Goodman. Commissioner Hicks.
Here.
Commissioner Staler.
Here.
Vice Chairman Rector.
Here.
And Chairman Singleton.
Here.
Mr. Chairman, we do have a quorum.
Thank you, Mr. Wyer. Is there any correction to the minutes from the September meeting? Correction, they were, we approve as printed. We have one item on our agenda today that is not a public hearing. It's a family transfer. This is Family Transfer Subdivision Plant Request, FTR 2022-00002. Mr. Wyer, will you read the caption, please?
Yes, sir. This is Family Transfer Subdivision Plant Request, FTR 2022-00002, submitted by Harvey D. Paget on behalf of Pamela D. Worrell, property owner, requesting a family transfer subdivision pursuant to Section 31514 of the Unified Development Ordinance to approve family transfer plat to create one new parcel on property located on Quince Road, zoning map 41, parcel 71. The affected property is further identified as being located in the Holy Neck Voting Borough, Zoned A Agricultural Zoning District. The city's 2035 Comprehensive Plan identifies this property as being located within the rural agricultural use district. When you act on this request, you will be acting on a resolution approving a family transfer subdivision on property located on Quince Road, zoning map 41, parcel 71, FTR 2022-00002. Staff Planner Shannon Wolf will be making her debut before you all today.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the Planning Commission. As Kevin stated, this is a request to subdivide one new family transfer parcel for Harvey Paget and his wife pursuant to Section 31514. The subject property is located in the rural agricultural use district as designated by the Comprehensive Plan. Pamela Worrell owns the subject parcel depicted above, which is located on Quince Road and is currently comprised of 103.73 acres. The proposed parcel for Ms. Worrell's son and daughter-in-law will be 2.73 acres in size, which are depicted in yellow, while Ms. Worrell will retain 101 acres as the parent parcel. The surrounding areas is zoned agricultural, which consists of single-family dwellings, fields, and forested land. Ms. Worrell received the subject property in 2013. The grantees have not previously received a family transfer parcel, thereby making them eligible for this request. The lot dimensions and building setback lines for the proposed new lot are consistent with the underlying agricultural zoning district, and each parcel fronts along a publicly maintained right-of-way. Additionally, there is adequate area on the parcel for a separate dwelling and drainfield. A deed of gift for the grantees has been prepared in conjunction with this plat, which prohibits the transfer of property within 10 years of its receipt, except in conformity with Sections 31-514 of the UDO. Lastly, all parties have completed a sworn affidavit acknowledging the proposed use of the family transfer is to provide separate places of residence for the grantees and to keep the family estate within the immediate family. In summary, this request meets the criteria for a family transfer subdivision. Therefore, staff recommends approval of FTR 2022-00002. That concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wolf, and welcome.
Thank you.
Who would like to speak? Does anyone in the audience like to speak to this request? Any none? Commissioners?
Chair, I move approval of FTR 2022-00002.
Got a motion for approval from Commissioner Hicks.
Second.
Second from Commissioner Creakmore. Will you do this with a voice vote? Any discussion in motion? Will you do this with a voice vote? All in favor, says aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? If the Mr. Padgett or Mr. Worrell is in the audience, congratulations, you have your Today, we have four items on our agenda for public hearings. Public hearings are for 30 minutes, 10 minutes for the proponents, 15 minutes for the opponents, and 5 minutes for rebuttal by the proponents. This meeting is videotaped and televised for public hearing. The first item on our agenda today is rezoning request, RZN 2022-009, conditional retreat at Creekside. Mr. Wyer, will you read the caption, please?
Yes, sir. This is rezoning request, RZN 2022-009, conditional retreat at Creekside, submitted by Melissa Venable, Land Planning Solutions Agent on behalf of Brian Rowe with Weldon Field &amp; Rowe, applicant on behalf of Bennetts Creek Partners LLC, property owner, in accordance with Sections 31304 and 31305 of the Unified Development Ordinance to rezone the official zoning map of the city of Suffolk, to change the zoning from B2 General Commercial Zoning District to RU Residential Urban Zoning District, conditional for property located at 5635 and 5551 Shoulders Hill Road, zoning map 12*55, parcels 1J and 1D*2. The affected area is further identified as being located in the Sleepy Hole Voting Borough, Zoned B2 General Commercial Zoning District. The 2035 Comprehensive Plan designates this area as part of the Northern Growth Area Inner Ring Use District, Inner Ring Suburban Use District, excuse me. When you act on this request, you will be acting on a resolution to present a report and recommendation to City Council relating to rezoning request, RZN 2022-009, conditional. Staff Planner Amy Bakiki will present staff's report.
Thank you, Mr. Wyer. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of Planning Commission. As stated, this is a rezoning request to rezone approximately 23 acres of property from the existing B2 General Commercial Zoning District to the RU Residential Urban Conditional Zoning District for the purpose of developing a combination of townhomes and fourplex age-restricted units. The subject property is located at 5635 and 5551 Shoulders Hill Road, which is approximately a quarter mile south of the Bridge Road and Shoulders Hill Road intersection. It is also located south of the Bennetts Creek Crossing Shopping Center. The Comprehensive Plan designates this property as part of the Northern Growth Area Inner Ring Suburban Use District. Both parcels are currently zoned B2, as I mentioned. The southern parcel is also part of the special corridor overlay district, being that Shoulders Hill Road is a principal arterial roadway. The area to be retained as B2 commercial zoning is shown in light orange above, whereas the area proposed to be rezoned to residential is depicted in yellow on this exhibit, which was provided by the applicant. The applicant also supplied a conceptual layout that is not proffered, in which they depict a row of townhomes envisioned along the rear of the southern parcel and a combination of townhomes and fourplexes on the northern parcel. In total, 63 townhome units and 48 fourplex units are envisioned. A maximum of 111 age-restricted condominium units has been voluntarily proffered, which would result in a gross density of roughly five units per acre. The 4.2 acres of property that's proposed to be retained as B2 zoning along the frontage is envisioned to consist of a variety of smaller commercial uses, ranging somewhere between 5,000 and 11,000 square feet or so in size, as just one example provided by the applicant. The applicant's narrative describes in detail many reasons for pursuing this rezoning request. First, they believe that the proposed RU district would create a better transition between the Bennetts Creek Quarter Neighborhood that's currently under construction and the area reserved for commercial uses directly along the frontage. Secondly, the retirement age-targeted community would be within about one mile of the Centerra Bell Harbor Hospital. During the initial review of this application, staff expressed concern and worked with the applicant to try to encourage that the rezoning consider as large of an area of commercial zoning as possible. Typically, with a commercial district that's also encumbered by the SCOD overlay, you would see a depth of about 300 feet reserved for commercial uses, and the applicant tried their best to accommodate as far deep of a property as they could and have proposed 220 feet for commercially zoned areas. While the applicant modified their rezoning in response to staff comments, we have substantial concern about the influx of residential development in northern Suffolk, and in particular, age-targeted housing has been a hot item in the past several years in northern Suffolk. The applicant provided a market analysis to demonstrate the demand that is still in existence, in their opinion, for this type of housing product, and they also provided information regarding the unleased commercial spaces in northern Suffolk, which they estimated at over 300,000 square feet. The applicant contends that the RU district would allow the property to provide additional rooftops to support Route 17 and Shoulders Hill Road. Lastly, the applicant also believes that the voluntarily proffered road improvements and their traffic impact study would be beneficial to the city, and they would not necessarily occur from a by-right development if that were to take place at the site. The Inner Ring Suburban Use District recommends residential densities between 6 to 12 dwelling units per acre. Neighborhood-level retail and commercial uses are recommended within walking distance of their intended markets, and subregional-scale centers such as large grocery stores can be accommodated at specific locations in this use district. The following policies are applicable from the Comprehensive Plan. Policy 2-1, keep development focused within the designated growth areas of the city. Policy 2-2, assure that development occurs in a predictable and orderly manner. Policy 2-3, promote a balance of residential and non-residential uses. 2-4, promote compatibility in land uses. And Policy 5-1, relate the availability of municipal services and facilities to the location and pace of growth. Currently, the western side of Shoulders Hill Road, as you move down from Bridge Road to the elementary school, there is an excellent opportunity for modern intensity commercial uses to be located where they have direct visibility and connections to other commercially-zoned property that builds off of Bridge Road. The proposed rezoning would result in a loss of about 23 acres of commercially-zoned property in close proximity to a very significant intersection. While it is acknowledged that there are commercial vacancies in the nearby area due to the surrounding zoning and the surrounding residential neighborhoods in place, staff feels that, based on guidance from the Comprehensive Plan, that this area should be maintained as commercial zoning, even if not developed in the immediate future. Therefore, we recommend that the existing property in its entirety remain commercially-zoned. Please be advised that the following uses are permitted by right currently. That includes retail, personal services, offices, medical clinics, banks, grocery stores, pharmacies, restaurants, among others. The Planning Department has considered two prior rezoning requests for this property, both of which were submitted by different applicants than today's request. After the Planning Department issued review comments on two prior rezoning requests and our concerns regarding compatibility with the Comprehensive Plan, the previous applicants elected to withdraw their request several years back. Staff has remained consistent in recommending that the existing B2 zoning is appropriate along this major arterial roadway. There's also concern that the additional number of units may oversaturate the housing market. It's hard to say, however, we are concerned with losing this B2-zoned inventory. Lastly, the 2023 Capital Improvements Program provides a transportation project for Shoulders Hill Road and Route 17, if you're familiar. And in fiscal year 2024, roughly $2 million of local funding is projected to be spent on that intersection to relieve congestion. Given this significant city investment, it further supports the desire to attract revenue-generating users and perhaps not just residential uses. With regards to impacts on public facilities, the Department of Public Utilities has no concerns, as there's adequate water and sewer available. The Department of Public Works has no objections to this rezoning. The proposed layout would require that site work begin before June of 2024 in order to utilize an existing stormwater master plan. Otherwise, the applicant would consider alternatives. With regards to traffic, the proposed residential development would add roughly 480 peak AM trips and roughly 400 peak PM trips. Traffic Engineering reviewed the traffic impact analysis that was submitted, and after collaboration with a developer, determined that the recommended improvement section of the TIA are appropriate. Overall, the proposed Shoulders Hill Road widening can be continued southbound until you hit Lakoc Lane and Meadowview Boulevard. And Meadowview Boulevard would become a signalized intersection with Shoulders Hill Road, as shown on their conceptual layout. Since the developer proffered that this would be an age-restricted community, there are no impacts on public schools associated with this rezoning. The applicant voluntarily proffered five conditions in support of their request. Proffer number one pertains to the building materials of the homes. Proffer number two states that the units will be age-restricted for folks 55 years and up, according to HUD standards. Proffer number three commits the applicant to the traffic improvements outlined in the traffic study. Proffer number four states that the maximum number of units would be 111 for a gross density of about five units an acre. Proffer number five was added during the review process with staff to state that traffic signalization at Meadowview Boulevard would be constructed when the road is built. More specifically, the signal must be built prior to the certificate of occupancy for the fifth dwelling unit that would be built between Lakoc Lane and Meadowview Boulevard. And the dwelling units on the northern parcel would be constructed, or they could be constructed without that signal, as they already have an existing point of access from Lakoc Lane. So as conceptualized, up to 66 units could obtain certificates of occupancy prior to the installation of the signal at Meadowview Boulevard. Lastly, the traffic impact study states that roadway widening should occur before the first CO of any of the residential units, so it's important to differentiate that the Shoulders Hill Road widening would take place prior to any CO. However, the signal, the traffic signal, could be installed at a later time. Please note that the property across the street, Bennetts Creek Square, that was rezoned back in 2005, proffered their prorata share of the cost of signalization, and the city currently holds a bond from that developer. Thus, the cost of the traffic signal would be shared among both parties when warranted. In summary, the existing B2 General Commercial Zoning District present at this property on Shoulders Hill Road is considered to be appropriate and correct, as is, as this site fronts on a principal arterial roadway and is only about a quarter mile south of one of the most prominent intersections in northern Suffolk. The existing B2 zone should continue from Bridge Road south for roughly 3/4 of a mile, as it does currently, in order to allow an opportunity for commercial revenue-generating land uses and job-producing land uses, in order to balance the existing amount of residential developments currently along Shoulders Hill Road. The existing zoning complies with many goals of the 2035 Comprehensive Plan and the locational criteria for the district. Therefore, staff recommends denial of rezoning request, RZN 2022-9, conditional, and the submitted proffer statement. And that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Amy. I will now open the public hearing. Who would like to speak? Come forward and speak in favor of this request.
Good afternoon, Chairman and Planning Commissioners. I want to thank Amy and staff for working with me on this application. We obviously have different approaches to the property in the application, but throughout the process, we worked together, increased the area of commercial from our original application, and demonstrated how office, retail, and/or restaurant could be situated on-site with the appropriate amount of landscaping and parking. As you noted, we have two separate parcels that are before you. The 15-acre piece that's adjacent to the Bennetts Creek Crossing with the lake behind it and that has no Shoulders Hill Road frontage, and then the second parcel, along Shoulders Hill Road, that does have direct access. So that's really, I think, the piece that's most prevalent in this rezoning application. I think the 17 acres, it would be, we would all be hard-pressed to see good B2 commercial development on that piece. It was previously a nursery, if you remember, but the 12 acres, I think, is really what's up for debate here. To the north of the property, as I mentioned, we have the Bennetts Creek Crossing, and as Amy mentioned, the Bennetts Creek Crossing Shopping Center. Directly to the east and the west, we have residential developments. If you live near this area, you've noted several vacancies in recent years, and space that would be considered, or was considered a space, has been converted to accommodated daycare, a fitness facility, and several vacancies in this shopping center along Route 17. The property to the south also is a viable commercial land use that's been on the market for years. It is my understanding that neither residential communities to our east or west wish for large commercial development on this location, nor the traffic that comes with large commercial development for the 27-acre in total parcel. Both properties rezoned in recent years, the pieces to the east and to the west of us, would prefer to have like uses adjacent to them. Pardon me. Please also note that the city's project, the Shoulders Hill Road widening project, stops short of our site, right at Lakoc Lane. So the proffered road improvements that occur with this project are enormously beneficial to the traffic pattern and traffic flow along Shoulders Hill Road. So I'm going to change topics here. Also, talking about commercial space, I don't think anyone has the answer to this riddle, but trends for commercial growth are surely changing. I think you would agree to that. Just last month, Suffolk announced the opening of 3.8 million square feet of Amazon, for the Amazon Fulfillment Center. This will employ 1,500 people. It is logical to think that we can establish these types of facilities that provide us nearly anything we want at our doorstep, and then also think we can continue to support this B2 space along a location like Shoulders Hill Road. Route 17 has boomed with commercial development. In the corridor of 17 and Harbor View, and I noted it, and you have it in your report, there's 370,000 square feet of vacant space currently. And I'm not, just not sure how Shoulders Hill Road can compete with what's vacant and then things like the fulfillment center that we're seeing come online here in Suffolk. With the application, Shoulders Hill Road will gain a multipurpose trail along our frontage and a lot of landscaping, a perfect addition along the frontage to connect the residential communities and Creekside Elementary School to the established commercial development at the corner of Bridge Road and Shoulders Hill Road. I would also note that the small amount of neighborhood retail, the 4.2 acres, and the clubhouse and pool that we envision along Shoulders Hill Road is exactly what works in this location without being too disturbing to the established neighborhoods along Shoulders Hill. In the staff report, several city policies were listed. The first was to keep development focused in designated growth areas in the city. Simply, we're doing that. Assure that development occurs in a predictable and orderly manner and promote compatibility. Yep, I think we're also doing that. Promote a balance of residential and non-residential. And as I just mentioned, and in the market study that we provided, we need housing for active adults, and we're providing that, and we've seen a lot of growth in commercial in this particular locale. We're promoting opportunities for residential residents to adopt a lifestyle that is less dependent on all the travel. Well, I would surely agree with that policy. We're putting residential that's well-buffered adjacent to an existing commercial. We're also adding in a connective roadway, so you'll never have to go out onto Shoulders Hill Road. You can connect through the site over to the commercial. But moreover, I hope we see a lot of pedestrian traffic and bicycle traffic. That's what this neighborhood is doing. And it also connects the 400 units that sit behind this through our neighborhood over to that commercial. So that surely promotes pedestrian and bicycle accessibility. Further, a policy that wasn't listed, but I found in the Comprehensive Plan, Action 6-1J, allow opportunities for retirement housing. The staff report notes that there's roughly 1,200 active adult or age-retarded housing units. Over half of those, 600, and I think it was 38 of those, are rental housing units that Suffolk has approved. They don't compare to the for-sale product that we mentioned. More of that product, so less than 600, was also out of the Chesapeake market. And then again, with the market study that we had noted, 25% of our residents in Suffolk are 52 years and older. We're still woefully short on providing for-sale product to that demographic. We spoke into Bennetts Creek Square, and they seemed pleased with the application. We actually heard from some of the folks there, specifically with phone calls, that they didn't want any commercial in this location at all. They'd prefer to see something very similar to where they live and a like product across the street from them. The four-lane road section and required turn lanes, as Amy mentioned, must be built before our first CO. So from Lakoc Lane to the edge of the southern portion of our property, Shoulders Hill Road must be extended and built with its turn lanes before we put one, or ask for one certificate of occupancy. Further than, Meadowview Boulevard and the traffic signal must happen simultaneously as we proffered, and that cannot be constructed with this, until, that must be constructed before we build the center part or the 12 acres that's along Shoulders Hill Road. All told, that's $1.2 million of off-site improvements, Meadow Creek Boulevard, Shoulders Hill Road, and the light. So I just wanted to note that because that's quite a big giving prior to us developing the site. I believe the project will provide much-needed active adult housing and the clubhouse and pool within walking distance of a shopping center, and it will reduce the number of trips from this site being developed as B2. I will stand by. You have any additional questions for me? And Mr. Rowe and the property owners are also here if you have questions for them. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Venerable. We have two minutes left. Anyone else have any comments in favor of this?
Good afternoon, Mr. Commissioner and Planning Commissioners. My name is Brian Rowe. I'm with Weldon Field &amp; Rowe. I'm the local developer, a resident of Suffolk, and thank you for hearing our application here today. And I'm not going to bore you with any of the details that Melissa just went over very well with you, but I just want to reiterate a couple of things. We are primarily, as most of you know, an active adult home builder. We focus, and we have a niche market to the 55 and better community. And I've heard a number of statements, not just from the city of Suffolk, but other municipalities in Hampton Roads concerning maybe the oversaturation of 55 and better housing. And just, I wanted to reiterate, we have done a number of third-party market studies from two or three different study groups, from Florida to Virginia to North Carolina, and every one of them continue to support the continued development of active adult housing for the Hampton Roads market. There's an unknown number that, in Hampton Roads alone, there's over 450,000 baby boomers, 55 and older, that residents who live in the Hampton Roads area. Even based on the number of active adult units that are currently in Suffolk or plan to be in Suffolk, and the other six cities with... to be in Suffolk, and the other six cities within our MSA, we are nowhere near any point of saturation or where these markets, these houses would not absorb well within the community. And obviously, there is a distinct need for it. So I just wanted to reiterate today, to that today, and thank you again for hearing our application, and I'll be standing by for any questions from anyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rowe. We'll move on to now the, in opposition. Does anyone here in the audience stand in opposition to this request?
My name is Christopher Dove. I live at 852 Colonel Mead Drive, Suffolk, Virginia. I am one of those people that needs retiring homes, however, I own one, so I won't be buying one of these. I want to concur with the Planning Department's recommendation, with minor exception, where they show that they accept the housing on the, I guess, the left side of this section. I would recommend that the better use of the property would be to use it as the B2 commercial property as originally zoned. The other section, off Shoulders Hill Road, it seems to be a logical extension to make that into a residential, or age-restricted residential housing. I think that this particular proposal just doesn't get it quite right. We can meet both requirements if the applicant pulls their, their application and resubmits it as a B2 on the left-hand side and as a age-restricted on the right-hand side. You all know about Shoulders Hill Road and how it's a major thoroughfare under extreme pressure. You, as a planning commission, your job is not to increase congestion on the road, but to decrease it or eliminate it. So I recommend that you do exactly that. Don't cause increased congestion because of housing. Go ahead and keep it commercial on one and give them the opportunity for the age-restricted they say is needed. Thank you.
Anyone else speak in opposition? Ms. Venable, do you have any rebuttal?
Just briefly, thank you for the opportunity. As the gentleman just noted, I wish, I wish it was that easy, that we could take parts and pieces, but the, as I mentioned, the off-site road improvements that are necessary in front of this property equal to be $1.2 million, $800,000 for the roadway and $400,000 from us for the traffic signalization. And, and with that said, there's a certain number of units that's going to require, acquire to be built to offset that cost. I also would mention that the property is zoned B2. B2 would provide quite a bit more traffic at this location, right or wrong. There would be many more vehicle trips versus an active adult community as we are proposing here. Thank you.
Anyone else for rebuttal comments? Hearing none. I will now close the public hearing. Commissioners, question, comments, or motion?
Mr. Chairman, I have a, I have a motion, and if, if I get a second, then I'd like to speak on it. My motion is to approve RZN 2022-009 with any conditions that may be there.
Is that the conditions?
Yes. With any, with any conditions or proppers, yes.
I'm going to second the motion.
Question of the motion?
Yes. This is, this is my area. I travel this area sometimes two or three times a day. And I can tell you that I have actually spoken to probably at least half a dozen people who live in this area. They do not, absolutely do not, want any more commercial on Shoulders Hill Road. There are so many vacancies of commercial property on 17 and on Harborview Boulevard that any more commercial is just oversaturation of commercial that has not been occupied, and folks don't want commercial. What they do need, though, is 55 and over dwelling. They need it, and if they can't get it, those, those who aren't able to get it in the northern part of Suffolk are moving into Chesapeake to do just that. They want 55 and over active dwellings. And for that reason, what did she say? What, what was it? I wrote it down. One of the most prominent intersections in northern Suffolk is, is, in fact, Shoulders Hill Road and I, and 17. That's the other thing people want. They want the city to hurry up with what they're going to do to improve that spot. But absolutely, more commercial on Shoulders Hill Road is, is just unnecessary. It's just putting a building there for nobody to be in, and I just don't see the reason for it. When we need rooftops, in order to get somebody in, in order to get somebody into the commercial dwellings, we got to have rooftops. So I just don't see how, how keeping it at B2 makes, makes any sense. And that's, I'm off my.
Thanks, Commissioner Hicks. Any other comments?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I have a comment. I think we all understand what the Comprehensive Plan says, but particularly in this area in northern Suffolk, and in this, particularly in this intersection, and talking about the commercial versus residential. If you look at the map, there has been, if you've been out there, if anybody, you know, in the audience or any of the other commissioners have been there, there is a, a lot of development, residential development, that goes between Shoulders Hill Road and the library back off Bennett's Creek Road, I guess, whatever the name of it is. But it is, it is a lot of development, which continues out this way. This is an extension, this would be an extension of that development. And I would agree, and we've talked to some folks out there, I, I'm not sure how the justification of, of extending or leaving that as a commercial area would continue. You have to keep in mind that it was commercial. Bennett's Creek Nursery had a large part of this property that we're talking about belonged to Bennett's Creek Nursery. Well, they have moved out to a site, to their larger site in Alaway County, and they made a business decision to move. In fact, all of their, their warehouses, the caboose is still out there from Mike's Train Land, okay? Also, there was a Rodman's barbecue place out there. It's closed. Rodman's moved to Portsmouth. So it's empty. I mean, there's nothing there between the back of the shopping center and this, this particular area that we're talking about. So I'm not sure how good it would be or how attractive it would be for any businesses. Keep in mind that there are a number of businesses that, I mean, there are open businesses in that shopping center, for one thing. And also, when you go out to Harborview, there, if anybody has been out there where the grocery store used to be, that's a desert. That's a commercial desert out that way. So I, I would fully agree that by keeping that as a, as zoned, currently zoned, I, I don't think we are accomplishing anything. And I think that we need to consider this, favorably consider this, this application.
I do have a question. I wrote, I didn't look at that, a couple of things. Does this city have any issues where a commercial piece is actually going, if, according to this plan, it backs up to Shoulders Hill Road? In other words, the stores that would be put in the commercial section on the front of this, according to the plans, would actually face inward towards the subdivision, not face towards Shoulders Hill Road? Does the city have any problem with the back of the commercial side being adjacent to that thoroughfare?
So we do require, as part of that SCOD overlay district, the corridor overlay district that applies to arterials, we do require that the same high-quality facade materials are used on all four sides, but it doesn't preclude someone from having the entrance to any retail or office uses from facing internally towards Bennett's Creek Quarter if they wanted to do it that way. They would still need to have good materials facing Shoulders Hill Road, though.
Okay. Second question deals with the, the stoplight. I guess, the non-existing stoplight. When I rode up into the neighborhood to look at this project, when you turn in on the existing roadway that goes back to the subdivision in the back, I would presume that the reason there would be no requirement for a stoplight exiting this, on, on this plan, is because it would be too close to a stoplight that's on the road further down that will ultimately go in. What is the timeline for the, for placing that stoplight in?
Just to clarify, are you speaking about the stop, the improvements at Shoulders Hill and Bridge Road, or the new stoplight proposed as part of this application?
The new one.
Okay. So the new stoplight that would be installed by this developer and shared with the cost from the property across the street, that would be done prior to their fifth certificate of occupancy? And I'll try and kind of draw here on the map. So on this site here, where I'm putting the X, they could have up to five certificates of occupancy for residential development just on that piece without installing the traffic signal? Unless, if there's a property, or if the commercial piece is developed sooner and is part, is part of a signal warrant analysis, the signal's really needed, then potentially it could be built sooner than the fifth dwelling unit. But at the latest, it would have to be built prior to the fifth CO on this particular piece. However, the northern parcel, and I'll try to do a dot there. That northern parcel, there's no, there would be no restrictions as far as installing a traffic signal for that part of the development, because they already have access in and out through the northern road of Lake Cock Lane. There's already sufficient access there. So the need to put in the signal would come from the southern piece being developed with the fifth CO.
Okay. Now, the Lake Cock Lane, at present, from, is there a left turn exit from Lake Cock now? I can't remember when I went in there. A left, a left turn lane allowing, left turns out of Lake Cock on to Shoulders Hill.
So the applicant, as part of this rezoning request, they would be improving the turn lanes at Lake Cock and at the southern entrance on Meadowview Boulevard, Lake Cock being to your right and Meadowview Boulevard being to your left. So they would be improving the turn lanes there. Last time I went out there, I think they had a base coat of asphalt or, and so there weren't actual lines on the ground to where you could tell what the ultimate turn lanes would be.
As a follow-up to that, from a timeline standpoint, and, and in the CIP, and I don't recall the, the details, but I know Shoulders Hill obviously is a main connector. I know there's been some complaints about truck traffic on part of that two-lane. What are the city's plans for, I guess, the improvement of the entire Shoulders Hill Road from 17 to Nanswin Parkway?
For the details of that question, I would turn to our Traffic Engineering Division to see if they could go over the details of what that, that lane configuration would look like if they're present here.
No, that's okay. I'm, I'm okay with that.
But I'm, I'm more than happy to send you the detailed information on that CIP project, absolutely.
Okay. I'll thank you, Amy.
Mr. Edwards?
I have a quick question, since you're here. Is the applicant going to do some road improvements, if I'm understanding correctly? And I guess, I guess my question's kind of like Mr. Stellis. Are the applicant's road improvements in conjunction to, I guess, the overall plan? Or is this something that's not in the plans right now to be done?
So right now, the city's project would stop right before their site, so their improvements, and I'll try to circle them here. Oh, this is just soon. So this is kind of the extent of their improvements between turn lanes and road widening on Shoulders Hill Road. Right now, in this section of Shoulders Hill Road, it's two lanes, and the city's project does not include making it four lanes. So the road would be narrowing through this section if the property's not rezoned with the proffers that would include that construction project.
Hold on. Say it again? I make sure I understand it.
Sure. So the city CIP project stops just before this site, so to the right.
Where the red starts?
Yes. So it would stop just, just before this site to the right, and the applicant voluntarily proffered everything, kind of that I circled on their concept.
And then where the red ends on the left-hand side, it'll go back to two, two lanes?
Correct. At the very left, yes.
At the very left, and then to go back to two. And, and I make sure, I mean, I know you said you want to start from traffic, but, but there's nothing right now in the CIP for anything going forward.
Correct, yes. So the four lanes would end and be two lanes along the frontage of this rezoning, unless this project were underway and the proffers were accepted, then it would be four lanes for a, a longer section on Shoulders Hill Road.
So without the resulted today, and that's, that's to say hypothetically, if this is approved today, then what's already in the CIP is going to continue a little further to the end of this property. But if we do not rezonate, it's going to stop basically where the, where it's at, Lake Cock, because that's the road. It'll stop there.
Correct. Now, with any, also keep in mind, too, that with any byright development in the existing zoning district, we do still consider traffic improvements with a byright development. Usually, if improvements are needed, it's limited specifically to their frontage, so turn lanes and tapers usually, whereas with the rezoning, they've proposed the widening in addition to turn lanes.
So interesting, I'll make sure. So you said if someone did do something on the B2 parts of it, with, basically, would be overlap, it's the same piece of property, basically, if someone did a byright bill there, that the, the city can require them in front of where they want to do it to do something very similar? Am I saying that correct?
I believe so. So my understanding is that with a byright development, the city's able to ask for frontage improvements, so dedication of turn lanes and tapers, however, not an additional lane to have a widened road. That's my understanding. Does that clarify for everyone?
And I have one more question. I guess this could be answered by anyone. Is 55 and older a distinction that is all or nothing?
So in our experience in the past few years, we've gone by the HUD standard of what's considered an active adult retirement age community of being 55 and up, or 55 and better is how a lot of these communities are advertised. You certainly could have, you know, families where folks are still working and not retired, and maybe they do have children or they don't. But as far as school impacts and how we measure those, if someone has voluntarily chosen to proffer a 55 and up community, we've exempted them from analyzing impacts to public schools.
Well, let me ask it this way. This property has two different sections, and I guess, I guess, can we go with right and left?
Sure, yes.
Like the right top, then you have a bottom. My question is, if, if, if the applicant or anyone, that's, that's hypothetically, could they make the right part 55 and then make the other part normal, or is that something that's not, I, I guess, like a regular? like a regular development? Is that something that we don't have the option for that in the city? Or you can make this part 55 and older, the other part regular?
I can address that. So yeah, the applicant can voluntarily proffer whatever they wish. In this particular instance, they're proffering that all 111 proposed units would be age restricted. They identified that as being necessary because there's no means to advance capacity at the middle school level right now, meaning that staff could not support this application based upon adequate public facilities. But nothing would prohibit them from proffering a percentage of units as age restricted or age restricted units on this parcel versus this parcel. They can voluntarily proffer whatever they wish to voluntarily proffer.
Make sure I understand. I mean, thank you. I appreciate it.
I want to make sure you're clear on my response.
Hold on. I don't have the power to tell you to sit down. That's the chairman. But don't go too far from the mic. But Ms. White, I want to ask this question as a follow-up. So with 100, let's just say, this is hypothetical now. I'm sorry to use your application for my homework. So it could be 55 and older affordable houses and regular townhomes in one application? If that was something that was the applicant wanted to show? So those mechanisms are available to do multiple things?
Absolutely.
Hmm. Thank you. Any other questions?
I have a question, but I...
I have, just to get back to Shoulders Hill Road. Commissioner Everman and I sat for three or four hours yesterday with the CIP, the next CIP. And on this particular stretch of all the way from 17 to Nanswin, is it Nanswin Parkway, I guess, all the way down to, there were, there are going, I'll give you a preview of what we're all going to see next month in the proposed CIP. But it was addressed, you know, and acknowledged by the city that some improvements, a lot of improvements, have to be done to Shoulders Hill Road. And in the CIP, you're going to see some of those proposed improvements to Shoulders Hill Road beyond this particular area that's being developed. So just to make it clear, the city recognizes that it's not going to leave it a two-lane road forever and ever, it can't be, because of all of the development on both ends of that road and in the middle of that road. So that's kind of where we are on that. But it is acknowledged. We'll see it next month in the transportation area. A lot of this, the funding of a number of these road projects, as we know, is through the state. And the timing of all of this has to do with the funds, that when they will be available, when the plans are going to be there, and all that sort of thing. So the city is waiting to get all of that in place. It may not, it's certainly not going to be next year, a year after that, but it is in the plan. So it was nice to see that and in conjunction with this particular development here. So I just want to let you know about what we saw yesterday.
Thank you, Commissioner Creakmore.
I do have a follow-up to Commissioner Edwards. And I guess, Kevin, this is, and I'm recalling something from years ago, so you'll have to forgive me. If this is approved as a 55 and older community and development starts and sales stall, what are the options to the developer far as stopping, requesting changes, et cetera, to convert this to a freestanding, non-age-restricted community?
That's a great question. It would take an amendment to the existing proffers to accomplish that, which would put them back through the public hearing process and ultimately in action that would be taken by City Council to approve or deny that request.
And a follow-up also to the fact that it looks like the biggest reason for the city recommending denial is that front parcel being commercial or B2 and not meeting the 300-foot depth for that section. This is a hypothetical question, but theoretically, had the developer presented this with no commercial, in fact, the total B2 going away and being rezoned for residential, I would presume that the city, based on that same criteria, would have recommended against this as a, rather than that little strip center up front, would have recommended against it primarily because of it going from commercial to residential.
Yeah. The city's key concern with this proposal was the loss of B2 along Shoulders Hill Road. So yeah, that is accurate.
But in other cases, some properties have been rezoned from B2 to residential, maybe not necessary in this particular area. That did allow the reduction or removal of B2 for residential, correct?
At this point, I will say that the city has lost some B2 inventory in the past.
In the last few years, yes. Okay, that's all I got. Thank you.
Okay. I'll let Ms. Amy stay down now. I'll give this to Mr. Wine. If this goes forward with approval, it's a two-part question. The first part is to you. The B2 part of this, the developer will widen that to continue from the, what the city is making the expansion of the, is it four lanes to Meadowview Boulevard? Is that a correct statement?
As proffered by the applicant, they are proffering traffic improvements as identified in their TIA, and those traffic improvements are a part of that TIA.
My next question is, Mr. Rowe or Ms. Venable, when are you going to develop the property behind the B2 to warrant putting a traffic light in? Are you going to avoid that and go in the back and leave that till the last?
Thank you for the question, Mr. Chairman. Basically, we're not going to, we're probably, here, just from a, I'm going to address a few things. Let me address your question initially. Our clubhouse and pool and our amenity complex is on the front parcel in question. Typically, anytime we have a model home complex or anywhere we're having a sales activity, we try to focus our activity around the million-dollar clubhouse and pool. So our plan would be to build the models and start development, and that goes counter to financial logic, trying to save and putting the signal in. But at the end of the day, this is where we're going to drive traffic to. That's the corner of Lakoc Lane, you're going to have the clubhouse and the pool, the model homes would be right there. So we're going to start right there. We're going to do all of the roads and infrastructure in both sides. We're not going to phase this development. So we will do all the roads and infrastructure contemporaneously. We'll do some first. We'll start on the front parcel. We'll work to the back parcel. We'll begin vertical construction on the front parcel and work to the back parcel. And from a marketing perspective, the lots in the back would carry a premium, so we would save those for later. So to answer your question, we're going to start on the first section up front first. That's our current development plan.
And starting there first, we'll bring you down to Meadowview Lane from Lakoc to Meadowview?
We'll have to go ahead and build that intersection. All that road work will happen at the same time. We're going to go ahead and build, in other words, we're not going to develop the back parcel up highly, we're the right parcel, and just kind of work back there for a while before we do Meadowview and the intersection there. We'll develop everything contemporaneously, and we will focus to make sure that when we get past the fifth CO, that we have Meadow Brook intersection built and the signal in place. And if that answers your question.
Your curve. You're going to put those as basically model homes in the beginning next to your clubhouse?
And home for sale.
And home for sale.
And so, in other words, we'll build our model homes, it'll be a model home here, and there'll be one up in the, when we build the first quadruplex, the H-shaped product that you see up on the right, there'll be a model home there as well. But we'll start with a model home adjacent to the clubhouse, and we'll build six or seven for-sale townhomes that kind of back up to, and I'm pointing, you can't even see what I'm pointing to, but back up to the commercial parcel in question. So that's where the sale activities will begin, right there.
Although you're making a model, you need to sell five of them before you're going to put my traffic light in. I'm looking at the traffic light. Traffic light is my focus.
Right, I got you. With the traffic light, I mean, I don't want to drill down too deep on the traffic light, even though we're putting the traffic light in, the traffic analysis doesn't even warrant the traffic light. We've agreed to do it from a safety perspective, because the more we thought through some other comments we had about the need for that light there, whether the traffic analysis warranted it or not, the light, we agree the light needs to go in from a safety perspective. So being a Suffolk resident and my partner, John Burchard, Burchard Homes is very attuned to public safety as well, we agreed to go ahead and put the light in. Kevin knows that's how that kind of went down, and we're going to put the light in. As soon as that intersection is built, the light's going in. Of course, we wouldn't just build an intersection and put a light in and not have any homes. That would make no sense for us at all. So we're going to follow the way we've profited, and I think we're going to begin on that front section, which should address anyone's concern about the timing of getting the light in the intersection at Meadow Brook. And to Commissioner Staley's question about, you know, could you, well, I think it may be Commissioner Edwards about, could you do active adult up on the right and maybe do market down, market homes down low? We're an active adult community developer. It's all about lifestyle for us. So for us to do, we could never develop the back right quadrant back there with no clubhouse or pool and have a successful active adult community. We're attuned to what the active adult needs and requires. The lifestyle component is the biggest thing. We're one of very few developers, the first thing we build is the clubhouse and the pool before we even start a unit for sale. We spend that money because that is insurance to us to drive the active adult to come live in our neighborhood. They have to have that amenity there. It's very important to them. It's very important to us. We want satisfied clients. Therefore, it wouldn't make any sense for us to split the sites up into a market for-sale site versus an active adult site. And last, I don't want to bore you now, there's a critical mass for, to be able to afford to build a clubhouse and a pool of this magnitude, which is almost right at a million dollars, you have to have a minimum of 80 to 85 units of homes to support that much of an amenity, if you can follow me. So you have to have that much density to support that. Therefore, if we took the 300-foot, where everybody's talking about going from the front, from the road front is all the way back 300 feet, the overall project wouldn't be even 80 units, because you would lose the homes that are on the back, right behind the commercial. So we thought through all of that, and we felt like we brought the best option forward. And did I answer your question, sir? I'm sorry. I did?
Thank you, Mr. Rowe.
Yeah, very welcome. Thank you.
Any questions, Mr. Rowe?
I got a question, Mr. Rowe. Mr. Rowe, the larger piece section that goes more towards Bridge Road, if this was approved today, you could build, what was it, 66 units in there? Is that correct?
Uh huh.
Without any traffic signal or any road improvement at that point, correct?
According to traffic study, correct.
Okay. I mean, but then, once you have need five COs for the second parcel, that's when you would have to put in the traffic signal, or you would put in the traffic signal, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rowe.
Thank you very much.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. We're prepared to vote.
Call for question?
Call for the vote. The voting machines are out, so we have to do a roll call. Why haven't you called the roll?
Yes, sir. Commissioner Creakmore?
Yes.
Commissioner Everman?
No.
Commissioner Edwards?
Yes.
Commissioner Hicks?
Yes.
Commissioner Staler?
No.
Vice Chairman Rector?
Yes.
And Chairman Singleton?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, the motion is approved by a vote of five to two.
Row, Ms. Venable, this will go to City Council with a motion for approval on 12/21/22. Thank you. The next item on our agenda today is conditional use permit request, CUP 2022-018 Taco Bell Drive-Thru. Mr. Wyman, you read the caption, please.
Yes, sir. Conditional use permit request, CUP 2022-018 Taco Bell Drive-Thru submitted by Sarah McGowan, GPD Group agent on behalf of Lori Ginther, Taco Bell of America LLC applicant, on behalf of DHBH LLC property owner in accordance with Sections 31306 and 31406 of the Unified Development Ordinance to grant a conditional use permit to establish a drive-through use on property located at 1523 Holland Road, zoning map 33A*AW Parcel B. The affected area is further identified as being located in the Holy Neck Voting Borough, Zoned B1 Neighborhood Commercial District. The 2035 Comprehensive Plan designates this area as being a part of the Central Growth Area Suburban Use District. When you act on this request, you'll be acting on a resolution to present a report and a recommendation to City Council relating to conditional use permit request, CUP 2022-018. Staff planner Brittany Collier will present staff's report.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the Planning Commission. As stated, this CUP is to establish a drive-through use for a Taco Bell restaurant. The property is presently Zoned B1 Neighborhood Commercial Zoning District and is located within the special corridor overlay district. To the north of the property is a variety of commercial uses, including Food Lion, Arby's, Hardee's, and BB&amp;T, Zoned B2 General Commercial Zoning District. To the south is the Bethlehem Court Neighborhood, Zoned RLM Residential Low Medium Density. To the east are a variety of commercial uses, including Wendy's, Rite Aid, McDonald's, and Quality Inn Suites, Zoned B2. And to the west are a few vacant parcels, Zoned RLM and B2, as well as the Bethlehem Christian Church, Zoned RLM. The applicant is proposing to redevelop the existing site in order to construct a 2,287 square-foot restaurant with two drive-through lanes. The subject parcel was rezoned in 1985 from R1 to B1 for commercial use. Additionally, in October of this year, an administrative variance was approved to reduce the amount of required parking from 31 to 29 spaces, as well as a reduction in the front setback from a 30-foot SCOT setback to a 27.6-foot setback. The proposed drive-through use is permitted as a conditional use within the B1 zoning district. The restaurant is proposed to have six to eight employees per shift and operate between the hours of 7:00 a.m. and 3:00 a.m. daily. Based on the proposed square footage of the building, a minimum of 31 parking spaces would be required. However, as previously stated, the zoning administrator allowed an administrative variance to reduce the required parking by two spaces for a total of 29 spaces. The site is currently served by Public Water and Sewer. The Department of Public Utilities and Public Works Engineering and Traffic Divisions have reviewed this request and have no objections. A conditional use permit recognizes that because of their unique characteristics or potential impacts on adjacent land uses are not generally permitted in certain zoning districts as a matter of right, rather such uses are permitted through the approval of a CUP when the right set of circumstances and conditions are found acceptable. I will touch base on a few of those, however, I have outlined each one in staff's report. Adequate measures shall be taken to provide ingress egress so designed as to minimize traffic hazards and minimize traffic congestion on the public roads. The site currently takes access from Holland Road. The applicant is proposing to utilize the existing point of access for the Taco Bell restaurant. A traffic impact analysis was provided as a part of this application and reviewed for consistency with the Holland Road widening project currently under construction. The Department of Public Works Traffic Engineering Division expressed no concerns regarding parking, circulation, or traffic associated with the proposed use. The proposed conditional use shall conform to the character of the neighborhood within the same zoning district in which it is located. The surrounding area on Holland Road is currently comprised of a variety of commercial uses, including grocery stores, banks, retail, hotels, sit-down restaurants, and other drive-through restaurants. The site was previously utilized as a sit-down restaurant for many years. The redevelopment of the property into a fast-food restaurant with a drive-through lanes will be in keeping with other uses along the corridor. When properly screened and operated in compliance with the city's noise standards, this use shall not be any more impactful to persons living in or visiting the neighborhood than any other use permitted in the B1 district. The applicant has provided a landscape exhibit demonstrating the proposed screening measures from the surrounding uses. Additionally, staff has placed a condition that states at a minimum, a 10-foot screening strip of either double-staggered evergreen trees or triple-staggered evergreen shrubs shall be installed along the property lines that adjoin all residential uses. Lastly, the proposed restaurant must comply with all regulations as set forth in Article 6 and Article 11. all regulations as set forth in Articles 6 and 7 of the Unified Development Ordinance. Additionally, as the property is located within the Special Corridor Overlay District, it will be subject to the SCOD Design Guidelines. In conclusion, staff finds that the proposed drive-through use meets the criteria for conditional use permits set forth in Section 31-306 and 31-406 of the Unified Development Ordinance. Accordingly, staff recommends approval of CUP 2022-018 with conditions as noted in the attached resolution and ordinance. This concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions after the public hearing.
Thank you, Ms. Collier. I will now open the public hearing. Who would like to come forward and speak in favor of this request?
Good afternoon. I'm Sarah McGowan with the GPD Group. I, our, our firm is the architecture engineering consultant firm for Taco Bell. Um, thank you so much for your time this afternoon. I really appreciate it. Just wanted to reiterate what Brittany informed you all about. Also to let you know, we worked through different layouts. This is the best option that we came up with. Um, we went through based on staff comments and public feedback from when we attended BZA hearing in September. Um, results from that hearing was we actually, oh, wow, sorry, provided a smaller building. Um, so we actually shrunk the square footage of the building. We relocated the existing attention pond to be where it is today. So we were moving the existing detention to allow for the parking spaces to meet the zoning ordinance. Um, and then by switching to the smaller building, we also pushed the building back. So it's even further back off Holland Road than the existing building is today, which helps with the visibility of the neighboring properties and uses. So you can still see them. We will not be blocking anybody. Um, that was a big thing. And we're also doing supplemental landscape. So on this landscape plan, um, it's kind of interesting how the surveyor did it, but it's the clouded. You'll see kind of right where kind of the shrubs end behind the pond, that is all heavily wooded right now, and that will stay that way. So that buffer will stay. So it's not, I just wanted to make it, because we didn't label it easily to understand. So that is all trees. Um, so if y'all have any questions, feel free to ask me. I'm here. So thank you again for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mrs. McGowan. Is anyone else to speak in favor of this request? None. Is anyone to speak in opposition?
Good afternoon, listeners. Um, my name is Whit Harper. Uh, I work at Saunders and Ahada down at 7F5 West Washington Street. Uh, represent the neighboring property owner, Carolina Quality Foods, where, where the Wendy's is there. Um, we were, we were at the BZA meeting and, uh, I would like to say my client acknowledges and appreciates, uh, the, the changes that were made from, from the initial plan, uh, and, and the fact that, you know, we've been kept in the loop on those changes by Ms. McGowan and, and we certainly appreciate the presentation by Ms. Collier. Um, however, they, they still remain concerned about the traffic impacts, uh, on 58. I mean, that's, that's a road that I'm sure all of y'all are pretty regularly on, um, and that section can, can bottleneck, particularly where it's at. Um, and, you know, they, they remain concerned about, uh, the visibility issues they may have with, with that drive-through, should it be granted. You know, that was a, a parcel that has always had a restaurant, they acknowledge, um, but in the past, I believe it was a Waffle House when I was a, a little bit younger and, and, um, after that, it was Al Fornos, which was always a place that would have some, some traffic, no doubt, but, you know, the, the traffic that's anticipated with a drive-through restaurant is, is certainly more than that. So, uh, because they're concerned about those impacts, they, they would still like to note their objection to this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harper. Anyone else to speak in opposition? None. Now close the public hearing. Rebuttal? I'm sorry. Thank you.
Only thing I wanted to add is, um, we sent them a aerial of the proposed site plan showing where their Wendy's currently is, and our drive-through lane will even be even with their Wendy's. So you will not light the drive-through as you're leaving the drive-through, which will not have any stacking, so visibility should not be an issue for their, for their building. So.
Thank you, Mrs. McGowan. Any other rebuttal? I will now close the public hearing. Then, then commissioners, questions, comments, our motion.
Mr. Chairman, I got a question for maybe Brittany. Is, is this gonna be right in, right out only off of Holland Road? It, it's kind of hard to tell from the picture.
Sorry. Uh, duh, duh, duh. So I don't know if you can see it very well, but there's a little porch up right there. So yes, it would be right in, right out.
Thank you.
Um, follow up to that. Don't go too far. Um, it, it also looks like, and having been out to the Wendy's recently, um, there is an easement apparently that runs across the back of, of Wendy's, that goes down to the, um, street that does have a stoplight on it, I believe. Is that correct?
Uh, yes, there is a cross connection there that goes behind the Wendy's that comes out onto Staley Drive.
Staley Drive, right.
So whether or not there is an easement in place would have to be determined if there's any recorded documentation that shows that there isn't a cross-axis easement in place. Um, but there is a connection there.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to move approval of CUP 2022-018 with the conditions.
I'll second it.
Any discussion in the motion? There are none. Uh, Mr. Wyman, will you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Commissioner Creekmore?
Yes.
Commissioner Eberwine?
Yes.
Commissioner Edwards? Uh, Commissioner Hicks? Commissioner Staler?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Rector?
Yes.
And Chairman Singleton?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, the motion is approved by a vote of seven to zero.
McGowan, this will go to City Council on 12/21 with a recommendation for approval from this body. The next item on our agenda is, uh, conditional use request, CUP 2022-022, North Gate Lot J, Parcel 3, Tractor Trailer Parking Lot. Uh, Mr. Wyman, will you read the caption, please?
Yes, sir. This is conditional use permit request, CUP 2022-022, North Gate Lot J, Parcel 3, Tractor Trailer Parking Lot submitted by, uh, W. Dave France, Kimley Horn Agent on behalf of Brian Werrell, NFI Real Estate applicant, on behalf of McGowan Group Incorporated, property owner, in accordance with Sections 31-306 and 31-406 of the Unified Development Ordinance to grant a conditional use permit to establish parking, commercial, not owned or operated by a public agency on property located at 130 Maya Way, zoning map 20*22J, Parcel 3. The affected area is further identified as being located in the Cypress Voting Borough, Zoned M2 Heavy Industrial Zoning District. The 2035 Comprehensive Plan designates this area as part of the Northern Growth Area Suburban Use District. When you act on this request, you'll be acting on a resolution to present a report and a recommendation to City Council relating to conditional use permit request, CUP 2022-22. Uh, Staff Planner Joshua Bateman will present staff's report.
Good afternoon. I'm Josh Bateman. I'm the principal planner that will be presenting on this case this, this afternoon. Uh, the application involves a conditional use permit, uh, request to establish an overflow commercial trailer drop lot, which is considered parking commercial, uh, in the M2 zoning district, where shown on the, uh, general location map there. The parking lot is intended to serve nearby industrial sites, namely the Lot H transload facility that was recently site plan approved by the city back in August. Um, just to sort of clarify, because you're gonna hear me talk a lot, lot about that facility, uh, this afternoon, um, because this particular use is intended to serve that site. Um, that project was for a by right use consisting of a 95,000, give or take, square foot, transload facility, which is essentially a long skinny building with loading docks on either side to transfer shipments from one truck to another truck. So it's not a true warehouse. It's, it's for transferring cargo from, from one truck to another, from one trailer to another. Uh, it included 350 parking stalls, um, and 125 employee parking spaces. So just in case the planning commission may not be familiar with, with what was approved by right on that, on that site, that's, that's what, what I'm referring to. The subject parcel has frontage on both Maya Way and Nansman Parkway. Um, Nansman Parkway is considered a special corridor overlay district road, um, although access in this case is only proposed to be provided to Maya Way from what is considered the secondary frontage, or primary frontage, depending on your, uh, you, how you look at it. Uh, to the north of the property is an agricultural field on the opposite side of Nansway Park, uh, Nansman Parkway that is zoned RLM. To the west and south are undeveloped parcels, um, Parcel 2 of, of the North Gate Commerce Park and part, the residual of Parcel J. Parcel J is proposed to be developed, uh, with a stormwater retention facility that serves this portion of the, um, Commerce Park, and Parcel 2 is proposed to be developed for a tractor supply, a new retail use. Uh, so for this particular project, the proposed facilities consist of a small guardhouse building that will be connected to city water and sewer service. Uh, 93 trailer spaces, that's 36 domestic, the 55-foot, and 57 of the international trailer spaces. I may have that backwards, but I don't, if I do, um, apologies. Uh, one employee parking space, gated access to and from Maya Way. Uh, there will be, the site will be enclosed by security fencing, and there's a privacy fence and landscaping, uh, proposed along the section of the property where it adjoins Nansman Parkway. So along that section, there will be a privacy screening, solid fencing, that I'll talk about more here in a minute. Uh, the applicant, uh, has requested waivers from the requirements for a submittal of a TIA, FIA, and ESA, although the project description, the narrative, does state that an environmental site assessment, Phase 1, was done for this parcel, and I have received that from the applicant. So the applicant has actually done an ESA, even though one is not technically required for this particular conditional use permit application. Uh, the TIA and FIA waivers are requested due to, one, the lack of significant additional or original, uh, trap, traffic or trips being generated by this particular use, and two, the positive fiscal income, or outcome, excuse me, in terms of revenues over expenditures of such industrial uses generally, uh, in the city. The traffic memorandum that was submitted in lieu of the TIA states that the use is intended to support parking demand surplus at Lot H at that transload facility, which has a supply deficit of 194 spaces as currently designed. That site is under construction, and that this, uh, proposed commercial trailer parking lot will not generate any new or additional daily trips beyond those generated by the existing industrial uses which the facility is intended and designed to support. Um, there are additional trips being generated between this parcel, Parcel 3, and Lot H, internal to the, uh, Commerce Park, um, associated with when the transload facility is, there's peak demand for loading and unloading space. Um, those are called, um, I think they're called diversion trips or whatever. So the diversion trips will go to this facility down, down Industrial Drive, down North Gate Commerce Parkway, down Maya Way, internal to the Commerce Park, to queue or wait their chance to load or unload at this, uh, transload facility. So this, uh, aerial image shows the subject parcel in relation to the Commerce Park as it currently stands. Um, there has been some development out here since this aerial photograph was taken. The tractor supply is under construction. I think the building is, has been constructed, or at least its structure has been constructed. Uh, that building faces Maya Way. It backs up to, to, uh, to Nansman Parkway. Its principal access is to Maya Way. The, it does share a, um, an entrance to Nansman Parkway with the neighboring lot, the lot there that occupies more or less the corner, that sort of L-shaped parcel there, uh, at the corner of, uh, North Gate Commerce Parkway and Nansman Parkway. Um, so that does have a right in, uh, no out, but, uh, that, that will, uh, contain an inner parcel connection with the tractor supply. So you will be able to take a right in, uh, I guess that would be eastbound on Nansman Parkway and get into the tractor supply that way. But to, to exit the site, to exit both sites, you would have to go back out onto North Gate Commerce Parkway and take a left or right onto Nansman Parkway. Um, this proposed use will not have access to Nansman Parkway. Um, and of course, as I mentioned, the adjacent parcel there, um, that contains, uh, the sort of the edge, end of the cul-de-sac, where it looks almost like landlocked in that photo, is the stormwater detention facility, the regional stormwater detention facility that serves this part of the, uh, of the Commerce Park. This is the existing conditions plan from the engineering plan for the subdivision. Uh, what it shows is the, uh, existing two-frame, two-story, excuse me, frame structure of the old farmhouse that's on this particular lot. That will have to be demolished, obviously, and any buildings and structures demolished before construction of this particular project commences. Uh, the two other parcels, uh, on Nansman Parkway are Zoned B2. They were conditionally rezoned in December 2020 and November 2021 from M2 to B2 for the tractor supply. And on that corner lot, that gets a convenience store and fast food, um, establishments, I should say. Um, so that's, that's under construction. I, I believe that the tractor supply is under construction. I don't believe the convenience store and fast food establishment is yet under construction, at least not when I was out there. Um, so this is the concept plan for the project. The applicable setbacks for this particular project, uh, involve the, um, 30-foot SCOD setback from the parking area. So this parking lot will not adjoin Nansman Parkway directly. There will be a 30-foot setback to the parking lot, and in that space will be the required 15-foot SCOD landscaping buffer supplemented by an 8-foot privacy fence along that fringe. There's a 20-foot setback along Maya Way that won't contain the fencing, the, the solid fencing, but it will contain the landscaping that the SCOD requires, and the guardhouse has been designed to meet the top 10-foot side yard setbacks. Um, the continuous 15-foot streetscape and screening, planning strips, uh, are required to be reviewed at the time of site plan submittal. So we'll review those to make sure they contain the right mixture of evergreen and deciduous trees and do a good job of buffering the site from Nansman Parkway and from Maya Way. And the 8-foot decorative fence proposed by the applicant is a composite fencing, which tends to hold up a little bit better, resist weathering compared to like wooden fencing, one tends to be a little bit more durable than that vinyl fencing. Uh, it's good stuff and, and should do a good job of, um, of screening the facility from Nansman Parkway. Uh, the, the property cannot exceed an impervious surface ratio of 90% in that, um, zoning district, and it can exceed an imperviousness, a site imperviousness of about 67% for stormwater management. That pond is designed to handle that maximum impervious area. So the, the concept plan that you see before you has been designed and laid out to meet those limits. Uh, both the 55-foot and the 45-foot parking stalls are 11 feet in width, if you care about that. And the entrance is designed to have two lanes, uh, of egress, of ingress, excuse me, with sufficient space to allow tractor trailers to queue and onto my, without stacking too far onto Maya Way. Uh, there's only one lane of egress. There is, and it's controlled by a security gate and a guardhouse building. Uh, the drive aisles to allow the tractor trailers to maneuver the trailers into the spaces that are oriented east-west for about 70 feet, whereas the, the ones just to allow for trucks to maneuver around the site are 33 feet in width. This is a rendering, uh, conceptual elevation of the guardhouse building. It's gonna be comprised of ornamental block, um, the decorative block. It'll have aluminum windows and with dark bronze frames and asphalt shingle roof. Uh, the decorative block, that ornamental block should look really good. So that's a, a good material. Uh, one of the things that staff was concerned about throughout this process is the no, potential for noise. Uh, so the applicant did, uh, conduct a preliminary noise contour exhibit showing these concentric circles corresponding to a composite decibel level of 75 decibels emitted at the northernmost parking space to be constructed on the property. So that's the source that you see there. Uh, the analysis excluded ambient noise from the highway and from the railroad as it's required to do under the UDO. The exhibit shows no residential structures within the outermost ring corresponding to a decibel level of 50 to 55, uh, decibels. Uh, a full noise study simulation measuring ambient noise levels relative to the noise specific to this proposed activity and taking into consideration things such as the natural terrain, the obstacles, the barriers, the vegetation that's, that are local. terrain, the obstacles, the barriers, the vegetation that's, that are located between the source and any receiving properties. So a, a full noise simulation study is needed to, to flesh that out. But I do think this represents sort of a worst-case scenario based on what we can expect, how, how we can expect noise to travel in this particular environment. So, um, I'll get in more into that about the, what we're going to require as far as the noise, uh, simulation, uh, when I get into my staff recommendation. Um, also, the applicant was required to prepare this truck route, um, showing the route that trucks are expected to take from the interstate to this particular site. Um, I happen to know when I was traveling to the site up Nansman Parkway from Suffolk, I was behind a tractor trailer the whole way. So I don't know that those, uh, no-through truck route signs are having the, the intended effect necessarily. Um, but this is the route that trucks should take on the four-lane section of Nansman Parkway to get in and out of this particular site. So, um, the rezoning and conditional use permit, uh, excuse me, the conditional use permit here was, was evaluated relative to the seven approval criteria established in UDO section thirty-one, three oh six C. In general, staff found, uh, that the, and it's described in the staff report, if you guys want more information on the, how that, this project was evaluated. But staff found that the potential for excess noise to nearby residential neighborhoods and the visual impacts to the Nansman Parkway corridor were the paramount concerns that we looked at when we were looking at those seven approval criteria. Uh, truck traffic was also a big consideration, but the fact that this lot H transload facility, um, and is not the actual source of the traffic, but rather the eight-hundred-thousand-square-foot fulfillment center at the end of, of North Gate Commerce Parkway was really the thing that was generating the traffic, made the imposition of traffic conditions, conditions related to traffic on this particular project impractical. Um, to give you some sense of perspective, so that the footprint area of the Amazon Fulfillment Center is eight-hundred-thousand square feet. That's more than four times the size of this parcel. Um, so the, in terms of the, the trips generated by that per, it's TIA that was done in two thousand and nineteen and the most recent studies that were done for, for this particular site, it's, you know, you hate to use the term drop in the bucket because it gets kind of overused, but it's, it's relatively insignificant with respect to the number of trips that were generated by that. So it kind of made it, you know, difficult to impose conditions on this particular use because we're limited as planners to what are the effects of this particular use on traffic and how do we address those through the imposition of conditions? Whether we're recommending turn lanes or restricting trucks to certain routes, we have to look at the uses specific to this particular project. The requested condition use was also evaluated, as I indicated previously, relative to the base zoning district requirements. Um, and staff determined in looking at all of this, that the conditional use in this location, subject to the conditions that I'm about to recommend are consistent with the, is consistent with the UDA approval criteria. Therefore, staff recommends approval subject to the following conditions. One, that this conditional use permit is granted specifically to establish parking, commercial, uh, for property located at one-thirty Maya Way, uh, zoning map twenty-star-twenty-two-J, parcel three, as identified in exhibit B. Two, the parking, commercial use shall be designed in substantial conformance with exhibit C, proposed trailer drop parking lot, concept one, version two, dated October twelfth, two thousand and twenty-two, prepared by Kim Lee Horn. Three, that a solid fence conforming to the detail depicted on exhibit C or equivalent fencing approved by the Director of Planning and Community Development shall be constructed adjacent to Nansman Parkway along the frontage of the property to screen the proposed use from view. The fence shall be constructed in accordance with all applicable requirements of the Unified Development Ordinance for such fencing and shall supplement the landscaping required by section thirty-one, four twelve for properties located in the SCOD, which shall be planted on the exterior, that is, the street side of the fence, adjacent to the street right of way. Four, prior to site plan approval, the applicant shall conduct a noise simulation study demonstrating compliance with the performance standards for noise set forth in section thirty-one-dash-six-oh-eight of the Unified Development Ordinance. The study shall demonstrate that noise from the proposed use will remain at or below the maximum level set forth therein for any residential use receiving noise from the subject property, or if, if that can't be met, shall recommend additional measures to be implemented by the applicant in accordance with the applicable requirements of the UDO. So we're taking that, that noise exhibit that was provided as a worst-case scenario. We expect that the use will comply with the performance standards of the UDO, but in case it doesn't, for whatever reason, we have an out that we can, uh, recommend or impose additional measures, they, and, and work with the applicant to establish those measures to make sure that doesn't become a, a detriment from a noise standpoint to Suffolk Meadows and, and residential properties on the north side of, of Nansman Parkway. That's my recommendation. Um, I'm available for any questions you may have following the public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bateman. I will now open the public hearing. Who'd like to come forward and speak in favor of this request?
Hi. My name is Brian Worrell and I'm with NFI. I represent the applicant. I wanted to take the opportunity to tell you a little bit about NFI and tell you why we're here, uh, before we get into the details of the project. So NFI is a third-party logistics company. We are the largest privately-owned, family-operated, third-party logistics company in North America. We employ about sixteen thousand people and we operate in about seventy million, uh, sorry, seventy million square feet. Of that, we own about twenty million square feet. Um, NFI started back in nineteen thirty-two. It's a family company. Um, the third generation operates it now and there are nine, I'll call them kids, of the fourth generation, uh, extremely active in the company now. Unfortunately, I'm not one of those kids. Um, but the Brown family is a great family to work for. They do treat us well. Um, and it's been, um, an enjoyable experience working for NFI. Why we're here, uh, the company's grown a lot since nineteen thirty-two. Started out with one guy with one truck. Um, Mr. Brown was moving goods in Vineland, New Jersey. Um, and the reason for the expansion has been largely attributed to the presence of our customers needing to be in port markets such as this. Um, we have a large presence here. Uh, by the middle of next summer, we will employ about one thousand people in, in the city of Suffolk and we'll be operating in about six-hundred-and-fifty-thousand square feet in your city. Our experience here has been great and I, I want to thank Kevin and the staff. Um, we have a building under construction right now, which the planner had mentioned previously. Um, we started this process with Kevin last year. We had some initial meetings. Everyone's been super helpful in terms of walking us through the process, guiding us through, making sure we're doing things the right way. Um, and we've worked with our consultant team, mainly Kim Lee Horn, which I'm very grateful for, they've been great, um, and your review staff, who has gotten us permits and approvals in a very efficient manner for the project that we have under construction right now. And I can say that comparing the city to hundreds of other jurisdictions that I've worked in. California's a nightmare. So thank you for not being like that. But in all seriousness, uh, we are appreciative to be here. Um, it's a port market. It's important for our customers. Um, and, you know, it's a place where we want to be. We're here for the long term. We're not a merchant developer. If we had the four acres as part of the project that's under construction right now, we would have built the parking with that project. Um, unfortunately, it, we didn't have that. So we're looking at this piece, um, to, uh, help that building and be paired up with that building in the industrial park. So we can have all of our operations contained within the industrial park that your city helped plan. Um, so we're appreciative that that piece is available and, uh, I'm here to answer any questions that you might have. But with the time remaining, I'll hand it over to Dave France with Kim Lee Horn.
Handout for you, but I don't, or handout distributor.
No, you can't.
Somebody can.
Leave it there.
Okay. So, um, my name's Dave France with Kim Lee Horn. Uh, good afternoon, Chairman Singleton and, and members of the planning commission. I want to, um, thank Mr. Bateman and the City of Suffolk staff for the detail and attention that they paid. I hope you had a chance to read the staff report. It is accurate. We do agree with the conditions, uh, completely and, um, we think it's a good project and we appreciate their efforts. Just some additional insight on the proposed use, um, and to expand on what you've heard so far. When you hear the term "commercial parking," it can be a little bit misleading. You might think about, uh, it being kind of open to everybody. You go up to the pay station, you take a ticket, you pay for how long you're there. That's not what's going on here. This is only called a commercial parking lot because that's the designation that is available to us in, in the code. This is a, essentially a private use that is supplemental to the other facility. So, um, it's not open to the public. It's not open to any truck driver that happens to make their way to the Commerce Park. This is for the freight carriers that work for NFI. Which leads me to, you know, why this is here. Um, if you were to look at the exhibit that I have sitting right here, um, you would, you would see that really what we're doing is just going back and forth in between two parcels inside the park. And, um, because this is supportive of that, uh, there really are no trips external to the park that are created whatsoever. Uh, even in the staff report, when you see the trips that were mentioned, those were really associated with the lot H development, not additional trips that are associated with this commercial parking lot. Everything's internal. And that's really the next important point. Um, the whole reason that we do commerce parks, when we started North Gate, which I had the pleasure of being involved with back to nineteen ninety-nine, uh, you make these things so that there is a cluster of use that can be beneficial to one another. You try to make it focused in one spot instead of having these things scattered about your city so that those, you know, that the issues that are associated with doing intense development can be contained in that one spot and we can deal with them. So here we've, uh, selected another parcel right inside the park to do exactly what the park was meant to do this whole time. And so, uh, as has been covered by the, the staff report, we intend to be fully compliant with UDO. Uh, we're going to have to go through our site plans here, uh, shortly if we are approved. But to reinforcement our commitment to the community with respect to issues like screening and noise, um, we have offered up the decorative fencing. Um, that'll be a nice resilient fence that's not going to rot, it's not going to fall down. Uh, the landscape screening should soften that edge from Nansman Parkway as you're going down it. And, uh, of course, the acoustical model that was mentioned, um, this is not something that is done very frequently, frankly. Uh, oftentimes when we have an industrial development or really any development, the UDO does have these criteria for noise, but to proactively prepare an acoustic study, um, just goes to an understanding of the sensitivity of, of this conditional use permit and the situation where it is, uh, in relative proximity, a little bit close to, uh, other uses like residential that could be impacted by it. So, um, it's not completely unheard of to do those, but to do them proactively and to basically agree to them as a condition, uh, goes a little bit above and beyond what the normal would be. So in conclusion, these mitigation measures, conditions that the staff recommendations have, uh, provided coupled with the lot's situation on an M2 heavy industrial zoned parcel, uh, it's inside the Commerce Park. Um, it's got immediate proximity and traffic can move just inside the park between the facility that supports, warrant your full approval of the application. So I want to thank you for your time. I want to thank you for your service. I sit on some boards like you guys have too, and I know that it's, it's an effort and I appreciate, uh, you putting into it what you do for the community. Um, and I'll stand by for questions and rebuttal period. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. France. Uh, I mean, Mr. France. Uh, Mr. Worrell, you have any other comments? We've got a minute left. Okay. Okay. Is there anyone here in opposition to this request?
Good afternoon, commission and planning staff. My name is Thomas Rhine. I live at one-nineteen Suffolk Meadows Boulevard in Suffolk, directly across from this proposed, um, CUP. Um, I'm here not with, um, a thousand people. I got a few supporters out here, my wife, but we're here as two people, residents of this community, um, who lived here for over seventeen years, straight across the street. And I'd like to talk to you about, uh, how I feel about this. I would like to speak in opposition to CUP twenty-twenty-two dash oh-two-two, the tractor-trailer parking lot proposed for one-thirty Maya Way. Uh, I'd like to, but I don't feel that I have had provided enough sufficient time or information to be able to do that in a more manner. I received the planning commission review packet on Wednesday afternoon, November ninth, two thousand and twenty-two. In my initial review, the planning commission, uh, my initial review, I determined that there were key elements missing from this package, along with information that brought about additional concerns and questions. The packet I received was missing the required traffic impact study, along with an environmental site assessment. I was able to contact the master planner, Joshua Bateman, who has been very helpful in my efforts to analyze this application. He provided me a copy and a, of an approved, what I felt or thought was an approved CUP application waiver for this, um, application for both those noted studies. The reason for the request that was noted on the form was proposed improvements only include parking lot improvements, no building is proposed, which is incorrect. Although it's small, there is a building attached to this parking lot. So right off, that is incorrect. Additionally, I'd never heard of it, how a traffic study had anything to do with the building since we're talking about ninety-three to ninety-four tractor-trailers. That's really where the traffic study is needed. There is a building associated with the CUP. This led to further concerns on my part. I continued my review on Thursday, the tenth, and emailed Mr. Bateman with the request to review all the noted, my noted concerns and questions on Monday, November fourteenth, which was yesterday, since all the city offices were closed for Veterans Day on Friday, November twenty-second. I was able to contact Mr. Bateman. I called him yesterday morning to review my concerns and he was very gracious with his time. I have no complaints there at all, in an effort to answer them. CUP twenty-twenty-two oh-two-two makes a number of references, as Mr. Bateman, um, alluded to, to another project at one-oh-two Industrial Drive Lot H, which was originally reviewed and approved under CUP twenty-twenty-one oh-ten on June fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. Previous to speaking to Mr. Bateman yesterday, I had been researching the Suffolk City planning site for documents related to one-oh-two Industrial Drive Lot H and over the weekend found a brief reference to this property on pages six and eight of Suffolk Planning Commission Agenda, June fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, but could not find any further details in this hundred-and-fifty-three-page document where normally there's some, uh, introduction up front and you go down, you get all the details, such as you see. That wasn't in there. I explained this to Mr. Bateman and he, he informed me that CUP twenty-twenty-one oh-one-oh, as originally submitted and approved, was no longer valid and had been changed in concept and design. So originally it was a parking lot. It was put in and approved as a parking lot for, I think it was, uh, well over five-hundred parking spaces, five-hundred-and-seventy-one, I think is the exact number. And it was changed to this transload dock that the gentleman just talked about and Mr. Bateman, with three, about three-hundred-and-fifty parking spots. I can't find or could not find any information on it at all. I was unable to do any research on this project. And again, to Mr. Bateman's point and to the other gentlemen's, these are tied together so significantly that any, um, studies that were done for the other should transfer to this and I can't find any information on it. So how can I do an analysis on it? So he said that he would look, uh, so I asked him about the traffic impact study. He said that this was the first he, he heard about this and he thought that there was a traffic impact analysis completed for the original project, or at least it should have been, uh, and that, that may be why the traffic impact analysis was waived on this project, the CUP twenty-twenty-two dash oh-two. He said he would look into it and get back to me with any findings that he had. He did send me, to his credit, yesterday at one-fifty-three PM, I received two documents. One was a hundred-and-seventy-three pages and one was two-hundred-and-fourteen pages, respectively. One was for the original project. was 173 pages, and one was 214 pages, respectively. One was for the original project that was approved, and the second one was for the, apparently for the transload project that I couldn't find any information on your website about, so I couldn't review it. And, let's see, completed for, right. In there, there was a, so again, right up front, I'm asking for sufficient time to review all these documents. So, I mean, this is our time as citizens to be able to question, you know, these projects, you know. So we are, again, my wife and I, we live right across the street, within 600 feet of this parking lot, you know, and I see the trucks go by there every day. And just, again, before I forget, there was at least two, if not more, traffic incidents on Northgate Parkway just this week. So to keep going back to, it's only gonna be within, in this Northgate, I think is immaterial, doesn't hold water, because there's accidents wherever there is, you know. So, again, a brief overview of the documents that I did see, did show that there was a TIA or some traffic memorandum that was done in October 2019. So anybody who knows this area, and again, even in the other, the zoning effort that was discussed earlier, it came up numerous times about the traffic on Shoulders Hill Road, where this is, Nansman Parkway, North Suffolk, okay, which I'll talk to in a second. But the last traffic study that they're using was done in October 2019 to justify that they don't need to do one right now, which I think is inappropriate, inadequate. So, CUP 2022, and even CUP 2021-010, or whatever it's called now, I'm not even sure, for 102 Industrial Drive, Lot H, is the increasing traffic issue surrounding Northgate Commerce Park and the surrounding roadways, including, but not limited to, Nansman Parkway, Shoulders Hill Road, Suffolk Meadows Boulevard, Baron Boulevard, and Duchess Way. They've been, have become so concerning in terms of citizen safety and quality of life impacts, that the mayor and the council have scheduled the minimum of two upcoming discussions on this. The documented evidence that has been provided to the mayor, the vice mayor, the city manager, the council, the director of Public Works, Traffic Engineering, and Suffolk Police Department is so clear in showing significant traffic violations and enforcement issues that need to be addressed before a project of this magnitude can be approved. One discussion scheduled for a city council meeting tomorrow, November 16th, states, "City Truck Route Strategy. The staff will present information on strategies related to the trucking routes in the city, and strategies to improve compliance and enforcement in the city. The presentation will also include specific recommendations for future city council actions as related to Shoulders Hill Road and the Suffolk Meadows neighborhood where I live, which is 500 feet from this proposed location." Additionally, on November 16th, which is tomorrow, the Suffolk City Council will consider a motion to schedule a public hearing to be held December 7, 2022, to receive public comment on the restrictions of trucks on Duchess Way, Baron Boulevard, and Suffolk Meadows Boulevard, with a motion already noted to approve. You can see the traffic situation with these trucks in this area is so significant, that the city council and the mayor have already scheduled not one, but two discussions on this. This entire project, including the associated Lot H, is what's driving a lot of this traffic. It needs to be reviewed before this or any other projects in Northgate are approved or considered. One of the exhibits submitted, which Mr. Bateman kind of chuckled at, for 2022-022 indicates the only truck route entering and exiting Northgate Commerce Park is being Northgate Parkway East between Northgate and Route 664, which currently is not happening, nor does the Suffolk Police Department have the resources to enforce it safely. These trucks are going up and down Nansman Parkway all day long. I, myself, on my Ring camera in my house, recorded 21, excuse me, Amazon tractor-trailers coming through my neighborhood in a 48-hour period. It's ridiculous. Absolutely ridiculous. And the city, that road, although there's signs up that say "no trucks," it's not enforceable. So the signs do nothing, and the city police can't even do anything. There are additional, if, so, excuse me, one second. There are also issues with the current zoning on that portion of Nansman Parkway. So there's, so Nansman Parkway from Northgate to the Chesapeake City Line is zone no trucks. So when the trucks are coming up 664, either way, their GPS is telling them they can't get off at Nansman Parkway because it's zone no trucks. So they go all the way up to Bridge Road, they come down Bridge Road, and they make a left-hand turn on Shoulders Hill Road. So they're legal. And all, everybody's telling, everything we see is, the trucks are only gonna go from Northgate up Nansman Parkway towards Chesapeake City Line to get on 664. Well, their GPS, which every truck driver uses, tells them it's illegal to do that, so they're circumventing it and coming down Shoulders Hill Road. It's a two-lane country road. They can't be doing that. Every, we all heard this earlier, you all were in agreement with it, on another project totally. It's a disaster up there. It needs to be fixed before we approve anything like this. I'm requesting that you could, and there's additional concerns with the noise, the lights, pollution, the diesel, the train. Nobody's even talked about the train that stops there for 45 minutes a day at a time. That traffic backs all the way up past the Chesapeake City Line and down Wilroy, almost, probably past, I shouldn't say probably, I know it passed Driver. And people are coming up the wrong side of the road, trying to bypass the traffic, coming head on the school buses. And the school buses are doing the same thing to other traffic. It needs to be fixed before a project like this can be approved. I'm sorry. You're putting people's lives at risk if you do that, every day. So I'm requesting that you consider the safety and well-being of the residents, students. There's four public schools in this area, four, and other drivers, before making any decisions. Please put off the review and decision on CUP 2022-022 and other similar applications until the city council, the city staff, and the Suffolk Police Department have an opportunity to conduct their review, make their recommendations, plan appropriately, implement that traffic route, and be able to enforce it. Because without that, when, if the city, if the Suffolk Police Department can enforce the traffic laws in the city, just doing them and putting them in place isn't gonna help any of us. It puts us all at risk. Please don't approve this message. There's one other thing I'd like to just say before I step down. I know I got a minute forty-six here. I would like to make one more recommendation. Navigating the city planning process in an effort to protect the residents' safety and well-being, I have found to be very time-consuming, technical, data-driven, and overwhelming, to say the least. Most residents I have spoken to want to be part of this process to improve the city, but give up because of these challenges. I recommend that you develop and implement a city planning Citizens Academy, as I'm currently attending with Public Works. It's an amazing way to both engage and educate citizens of Suffolk on all the great things the city does to support them in our positively planned growth. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ryan. If there was an opportunity, is anyone else like to speak in opposition to this request? I'm not calling you up. I'm asking you if you would, will want to. I assure of hands, please. Commissioners, we have extended our time, our, time has expired, and I'm asking that we want to extend the time to allow one other person to speak.
Moving along five minutes.
Five minutes. Yeah. Can we take a voice vote? All in favor?
Second.
Second? Okay, second. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
All in opposition? Okay, sir, you can come up, and we'll extend the five minutes to, before rebuttal.
Good afternoon, commissioners. My name is Kevin McKean. I live along Lake Kilby Road, Suffolk, Virginia. It's another road. It's plagued by trucks. Not a truck route. Trucks all the time. Rattle a chime in my chatting cabinet. I agree with Mr. Ryan, 100%. He needs time to do his research. Please allow him that time. Thank you very much.
Sure, Mr. McKean. Okay, that's time for proponents, opposition, Mr. France, Mr. Worrell.
Thank you, Commissioner. Let me start by saying, we empathize with Mr. Ryan. And I want you to all understand how deeply we understand. The situation is not good right now out there. I don't think that you all have had the opportunity to get briefed on kind of the suite of circumstances that has unfortunately befallen the intersection there at Nansman and Shoulders Hill, that's causing the issue of trucks getting diverted through their neighborhood. And so, I'm gonna try to explain a little bit of it, and I saw that we've got a couple of members of senior staff here in the back that have been working hard on this, and you may have questions for them after I bring a couple points. So I saw the news article. I was made aware that the trucks were running through Suffolk Meadows. And my first reaction as an engineer was, "Why?" Because it doesn't make sense. It's a nonsensical route for a truck to take. And so, I've been on the phone with City of Chesapeake Traffic Engineering, City of Suffolk Traffic Engineering, and with Amazon directly with their traffic engineering and operations planning people. And at the heart of the issue is that there's a error in the published documents that shows Nansman Parkway from Chesapeake all the way to Northgate Commerce Park as being closed to trucks. Now, that's not been the case. I mean, Northgate Commerce Park has been up and operational since 2001. Trucks have been running down there. It's never been an issue. However, in the published documentation that the city has and pushes out into the world, it still shows erroneously that that section is closed to trucks. And so, what happens is, in the world of commercial trucking, you have software that you follow. Similar to what I did when I came out here tonight, I put it into Google Maps and said, "I need to go to the Suffolk Municipal Center," and it said, "This is the best route for you to go." That actually also happens at a commercial scale, and the commercial folks that publish that data are extremely sensitive about not routing trucks down roads that don't have, that have truck restrictions, because that's a liability for them, right? If they send a commercial trucker down a road that's not supposed to be on there, because that's what the routing software says to do, then that's a liability for them. And unfortunately, because this bad information is out there in the world, that's what's happening. And so, what we're working on, and what you're gonna hear about tomorrow night with the city council briefing, is to take actions to make sure that there's a truck restriction through the Suffolk Meadows neighborhood that does get published, because there's not one right now, to make sure that the restriction that is erroneously showing up on Nansman Parkway is lifted. And there's another nuanced glitch that's happening in there that you just can't write this stuff. For some reason, in the nighttime hours, it's actually shutting down a section of Shoulders Hill Road that's directing trucks to go through the neighborhood and around that intersection. It's crazy. But the software is causing it. And before you just hate every truck driver out there, this is not the case with every commercial carrier, but with many of them, if they don't follow the trip route that they're given, they get penalized and fined. And so, these poor truck drivers, while they certainly all have brains and can probably figure that this isn't where I'm supposed to be going, they're afraid to do something otherwise, because it's their job on the line. This is a mess. And I understand it's a mess, and I want to make sure that you understand that Kimley Horn is a company. We're, you know, not only is NFI a client, Amazon's client, many, many other people in Northgate Commerce Park are clients, the City of Suffolk is a client. We're working with everybody that we can talk to. I've also talked to the Port of Virginia. They have many outreaches that they have available at their fingertips. They have twice-a-month meeting with the commercial carriers, so that's all the truckers. The HRTPO has a commercial trucking task force that meets once a month. And then there's also a local trucking association that they have periodic correspondence with. And the commitment I got from my liaison with the port was, once we get this data straightened out, which, some of which is gonna happen tomorrow, we're gonna work with the port to push information out, basically facting data sheets into the commercial trucking community, to hopefully get it in the hands of the bosses and the drivers eventually, to say, "Guys, this is not what's supposed to be happening. You're not supposed to be coming down Shoulders Hill Road. You're definitely not supposed to be going through any residential neighborhoods. This is a problem. You need to be aware of the problem so that you can take corrective action, even if your GPS is telling you to do that, you know, this is what you're supposed to do." And the example she gave me is Hampton Boulevard in Norfolk. If you guys are sort of familiar with that area around NIT, it has some very particular restrictions about how trucks can go, and when they can go, and how they should behave. And that's one she gave me as an example of, you know, periodically, they have to push out information. So, on top of all of that, there's also some signage issues out there. And I know that when I talked with Jason Souters with City of Suffolk Traffic Engineering, they've already moved around a bunch of signage in that general vicinity to try to make it more explicit for trucks. Carol Collins is here with me. He's my traffic engineer. He's the scary-looking fellow there with the red tie. He also went out and did an analysis of the surrounding area and did like a sign inventory, where we've given that to Mr. Souters as well, so that they can get at least our opinion on some other things that we might want to do out there to continue to refine the signage and routing and wayfinding, so that the truckers that are using the facilities are hopefully better informed and can make better choices, so that the problems that we're having with the adjacent neighborhoods go away. And if I could say like one last thing about that, this is something I'm talking with people about every single day since I found out about it. I'm, you know, reaching out, trying to learn more, trying to figure out, how can we push this information out to, even to Google and Waze and those people, so that they can get the corrected information, so that even if you don't have a commercial trucking thing, if you're in a small fleet and you're just using your cellphone, like I did today, that information gets corrected. We take it extremely seriously. We know it's a problem. All that said, I want to go back to the reason that this CUP is in front of you is for a parking lot that's associated with an existing facility. All those trips are happening inside. Those guys are not running around outside. They're not migrating outside of the facility to go through this person's neighborhood to get to there. And NFI's facility is not up and operational yet. It's still under construction, so it's not their trucks that are causing this issue. So we want to be part of the solution. We're here. We're a partner. You heard Brian said it. It's a family-owned company. They care about their employees, who are gonna be people that live in this community, and we want to help out. I hope that you can kind of put aside that massive problem and advance our application forward, so that we can keep on progressing. I have a minute and a half, so I'm gonna try to address a couple of the other concerns that Mr. Ryan had about just not having the things at his fingertips and being confused about what's going on. And I'm gonna run out of time on this, so I'm gonna try to get real fast. Lot H was originally under contract to another buyer. That buyer wanted to put a commercial parking lot on that lot. That conditional use was acted on by this body and by the city council, and it was approved. That land sale never happened, so that purchase by that tenant never went forward. When that contract fell through is when NFI picked up that piece of land. We then developed a by-right transload operation on that facility. Of course, you know that by-right, those things don't come in front of you, because it's a normal site plan. So we went through the whole site plan process, developed the plans. The plans are approved and underway. So I can understand with what he was trying to do to piece together what happened here and what's going on. That would be very confusing. But the long and the short of it is, that conditional use that had been approved on on that same exact site, the parcel H, it just vaporized when that other deal fell through. So hopefully that helps clear it up a little bit. Phase one ESA, we did do one. Nothing was found on the site to be any kind of noxious or concerning thing. Buildings have all been taken down. Site's ready to go. So that was, I'm at zero minutes. I would favor your questions if you have any while I'm here.
We'll take the questions after we close. Thanks, Mr. France, for all the information you gave us. I will now close the public hearing. Commissioners, questions, comments?
Mr. Chairman.
I have a couple of questions. Probably the first one is going to be, oh, perhaps for Mr. Bateman. In the noise diagram that was presented to us, what is the approximate radius of that circle that is shown in that? And then also, is, are those readings taking into account the buffering that is going to put between the parking lot and Nansman Parkway? I mean, is there any way to account for that?
I can probably answer the first part of that question better than the second part. I may defer to Kimley Horn on the second part. But the first answer, just to give you an idea of distance, if you look at that purple asterisk there in the middle that represents the source, it's about 500 feet, give or take, to the outermost ring. Is that about correct? Yeah. And as far as the second part of the request, they know more about conducting these acoustic studies than I've just learned about here recently. So I'm going to let them answer that part of the question, if that's okay.
Yeah, that's because I have a question for him as well, so it's just where he stages himself.
Thank you, Commissioner Rektor. So this particular exhibit, we'll call it, is naked. It doesn't take into account terrain. It doesn't take into account the fence that we're erecting. It doesn't take into account trees or anything else. So this is a real quick analysis we did to give ourselves kind of a, an understanding of what the emissions from the acoustics might look like. And not to pour on too much to it, but what they're doing is a composite noise of trucks backing, trucks starting, trucks turning off. They kind of come up with this hybrid noise value, which is what that 75 decibel number was. But this is a unconstrained noise emission. When we get to the full study, what we'll do is actually take into consideration those things that would be in the way of it and help shield it and block it, and that'll actually show some reduction in some of those noise values. And before I leave it, part of those studies, just so that at least maybe the neighbors can hear it, we actually go out and set up these acoustical reading sensors in the neighborhood. So we'll set them up, and they'll pick up everything from dogs barking to trains going by. It'll pick up all that ambient noise to find out what's kind of happening out there in the community. That goes into the study. So I don't want to go into what the results are going to be because we haven't gotten there yet, but I want it to be maybe understood, just for the record, that the acoustical studies are very specific to the location where they're done. They take into consideration elevation, land cover, background noise, all of it.
Then my second question, which is for you. Going back to the errant information that is loaded into that software that the truckers use to plan their routes, how mechanically does that information get changed? And the reason why I ask is because when we moved the business that I worked for for a number of years out to Suffolk, the business was located at 101A Loomis Road. For some reason, with Google, when you typed in Berkeley Machine Works, it came up as its address is my home address, which is 909 Pennsylvania Avenue. I was not even an owner of the business. I just simply worked there. And periodically, I would get calls from out-of-state delivery folks driving 18-wheelers who would say, "I'm approaching your business, but this looks like a residential area." And I said, "That's because it is." And I would find out where they were and then tell them where they needed to be. And my IT people worked on that for years, literally. And you can probably still Google Berkeley Machine Works, and it would show the address is 909 Pennsylvania Avenue. So how does it get changed in this particular software? And then what kind of confidence can we have that it's going to actually happen?
Yeah, that's an excellent question and was honestly one of the very first questions that I had when I heard what was going on. So I have a couple of different answers on what I've learned. One of them is that some motor carriers, if you're of a large scale, have a very specific vendor that prepares and distributes their software. So where we're dealing with one of those vendors, we can go directly to that vendor and have great confidence that we can change that information. As I said, there's reluctance to do that when the published information from the city is conflicting because of the liability involved in that. And to get over that hurdle, in at least one case that I'm aware of, they simply, I think, talked to Robert Lewis and said, "Is it okay?" And so when you have those proprietary softwares, that's how you get to them. When it comes to the Wazes and Googles and kind of the publicly available software, I'm going to be honest with you. I still haven't gotten a perfect solution. It's a little more black box. They pull information from the city where they'll actually go to the city and ask for information, but there's not like a help desk that you necessarily can just go right to and get an answer. So, Mr. Rektor, I'm trying to be very transparent with you here, probably to my client's detriment. It is something I am trying to find an answer specifically to because I think that that is crucial to us being able to leverage a solution that can happen quickly. Because we can't just let this evolve for the next six months. This is something that needs to happen as quickly as the city can take action on it. I do think that as you're talking with your counterparts on city council, encouraging them to prioritize this and to take actions on it so that the official published information is correct and can sort of legally be followed would be a great step in the right direction. I'm going to keep working on the other part of that solution, which is making sure that I know exactly who I need to talk to so that I can give them that new data set. I'm not going to give it to them. Robert Lewis is. But that piece of it is, unfortunately, just because of the size of those organizations is a little bit tough to get to. So I'm working on it.
And this is, you know, just another kind of general question. Without this, for lack of a better phrase, lay-down yard for trucks, where would, what would your trucks do? I mean, what would the, if you didn't have this, what would the impact to you be?
It really just goes to the efficiency of the operation. So, you know, clearly, the facility can operate with the 350 spaces it has on it. What the, the planning software that they use to do the logistics planning for these facilities helps you determine how quickly you can turn trucks on doors. So fundamentally, what's happening is you're bringing in international carriers on one side. So think of the cans that come off of the ships, those containers. Those come in one side of the building, and on the other side, you have the domestic carriers. Those are your 18-wheelers that look like the stuff that runs up and down 64, okay? And so their efficiency software says that to operate at optimum efficiency, you need to have this balance of doors to parking spaces. And so essentially, this facility will just be constrained where it can't operate as efficiently as it possibly could if they don't have enough spaces to provide those buffers. And that's just going to be what it is. It's, you know, I don't want to use the scare tactic of the trucks are going to be parked all over the universe because that's really not where we're going with this. And I don't want that out there that, like, the truckers are going to be, you know, parked in the neighborhood waiting to get into the facility. That's not how these businesses actually operate. It wouldn't be logical for them to do that. Their business is based on logic and efficiency. What we're trying to do is up their ability to be more efficient and to help serve our port community as efficiently as possible.
Thank you. Because I realize the software issue is not yours and yours alone. Mr. Lewis, would you care to comment on that? Or I hate to put you on the spot, but...
Let's see how much I got right.
As they say in the golf tournament, "When the man hits a drive, you the man."
Thank you, sir. I really did not come in prepared to speak on this topic. But I will reiterate a few of the things Mr. France said. It really, this issue with BAP is an ongoing issue. I'll take you back about 10 years ago. We literally started getting complaints from the West Haven Lakes neighborhood that tractor-trailers were getting in there looking for Target. What in the world? Well, we got, started doing some research, and we found out somewhere along the way, somebody on a map had put a little symbol in the backside of West Haven Lakes that said, "Target." Who did it? Where it come from? We never figured that out. And next thing you know, it proliferated across the internet. And it took us quite a number of months to get that corrected, put signs. We did a lot of things to try to help it. In this particular case, when the concern through the neighborhood was brought to us, again, we tried to be less intrusive rather than more. So we started out with some signage, some different things, trying to encourage. Again, we were still having issues. We reached out to one of the major logistic companies here that just came into the city and said, "Hey, we're having a problem. We're documenting. We got video evidence. Big old trucks with a smile on the side coming through the neighborhood. What can you do to help us?" The nice thing, like Mr. France said, with a company like that, they have their own software. Within a matter of a couple of days, I was told, "This has been corrected. We've got it in our software. Don't go that way." She said, "It might take a few days, up to a week, to get it distributed out to all the trucking terminals themselves." The other interesting thing that that company did is they went in there and the software, and they did what they call a geofence around the neighborhood. So not only do they have it on their software saying, "Don't go that way," but every day, every 24 hours, they get reports from the truck drivers back as to where they went, where they went, how long it took them to get there, where they stopped, all of those things. And they set it up that anytime they have a violation there, they get a notification in the Suffolk office that someone violated that area. And again, they've been very proactive. We got an email this past, I think it was Friday or Monday of this week, that said they had been watching, that they had not had a documented violation there in well over a week and a half, which is a good thing. We're headed in the right direction. But it's the really big organizations, the Googles and the Wazes and the other world that are really hard to fix. We, the city, have been trying for quite a period of time to figure out how to share railroad data to the world through Google and Waze. And you would think, "That's a great piece of data. If I can just give them that the railroad gates are down, and they can pop it up on the maps, it would be a great selling point for them." They all nodded their heads, said, "That's a wonderful thing." Now, we're still struggling how to get it to them. So it is certainly an ongoing issue. There's, over the years, there's been some different interpretations about the way the law was and how it was written, what it meant. Again, there's some issues that have popped up here recently where apparently VDOT has got some old erroneous data still floating around that we thought had been taken out of place. And again, it's causing conflicts in some of these writing softwares. It is not that we are not actively engaged. We are very actively engaged on this, trying to do that. We've even proactively gone out and taken some of the signs and moved them and enhanced signs and put new signs up to, again, try to help the truck driver. But again, all the signs in the world doesn't always fix the problem. When the guy's riding along, and he says, "But this thing says, 'Go here,' and I got to follow this because I get in trouble if I don't." So again, we're trying to overcome some of those. We have not yet stopped that. But we are very proactive. And it's not just in this one area. Truck issues are an issue across the country right now. Our economy is changing. We are becoming much more a society that we sit at home, order on the internet, and have it delivered to our houses. And there's a whole infrastructure that goes about getting that there. So the proliferation of trucking and delivery vehicles is only going to get to be more and more. We just got to figure out how to manage it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis.
I'm done.
You're done? Sure? I have to make a statement, you know. Thanks, Mr. Lewis and Mr. France. We're talking about everything exterior to what we're dealing with today, which is interior to a commercial park and a parking lot. So again, got a discussion on the motion dealing with the internal parking lot of this commercial, of this commerce park.
Mr. Chairman, I do have a brief question for Mr. Bateman. This relates to the, I guess, to the conditional use permit as far as restrictions as to what can take place on the parking lot. And I guess I'm thinking outside the box here. But are there any height restrictions on what can go in there? For example, could this, at some point, under the current conditional use permit, become a storage lot for containers?
Not if these recommendations are followed. Not if the planning commission chooses to recommend this for approval with the conditions recommended by staff. Because condition number one says this is granted specifically to establish commercial parking. What you're talking about, I don't believe would fall under that definition.
That would be storage. That'd be commercial storage, I would presume.
I don't think commercial storage is, outdoor storage is the same thing as commercial parking. I think you have to have a vehicle or something, some type of vehicular conveyance, yeah.
Outdoor storage in the M2 district is separately defined use. This would not permit that.
Very good.
And that requires its own conditional use permit.
So they'd have to come back to you.
Thank you.
Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I'll go ahead and make a motion that CUP 2022-022 be approved with the conditions.
Approved with Commissioner Rektor. Get a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Albert Wine. Discussion and motion?
Yeah, I just want to say one quick thing, real quick. This has been very enlightening. I mean, you know, it really has. I mean, you read things and you see things and you don't think they're that significant, then you have a discussion. You realize it is. There's a whole lot more to it than we thought. So I appreciate the public coming and sending the email and all that was said. In most cases, I feel more comfortable when there's been a community discussion about the scope of what's going on. But the way I see it, I don't think any of the concerns can be addressed with a community meeting. What I do like is that regardless of what we do today, there is 30 days between our meeting and the city council meeting. And hopefully, the community who has concerns will have a chance to get with the applicant and have an open dialogue. And also, in regards to the concept of information, which I think is a very fair, I think we discussed that today at length. I really appreciate the concerns. And again, the good thing about this process is this is not the final decision. There will be another public hearing next month. And then you have the planning commission's staff report, and then hopefully a conversation with the applicant. And then there'll be more information on the city council side. And so I appreciate Mr. Chairman for this time.
Mr. Chairman, I am, I have listened. I have read. I have pondered. And I am still totally conflicted with this proposal. And I guess it's because I live at 3432 Nansman Parkway. So I see, I guess I zeroed in on the route. Proposed, proposed that they will take, or expected that they will take 664 or come down Nansman Parkway or come down Portsmouth Boulevard that turns into Nansman Parkway and turn on into Northgate and do their little parking lot thing, do their switcheroo's, and go on back up to 664. But there is nothing that prohibits them from turning left when they come out of Northgate and coming past my house, which is what they do every day, all day long. And that's because there's something that goes on on 58 two or three times a week. And so 337 becomes... And so 337 becomes the parking lot that everybody uses to get where they're going very, very slowly. And so I just see this as another, another, another way for some more trucks to come past my house and keep me from coming out of my driveway. The city has not fixed that problem yet. Those lights that they talked about on Sleepy Hole Road, that it's past the road have not happened. I just don't see, the traffic issue is not an issue that I can avoid only because I have to be subjected to it every day. So if I'm, I'm, I'm right now sitting here trying to take the traffic issue out of my yard, out in front of my house so that I can, so that I can vote along with these young men in a better way. So, you know, bear with me because I'm still thinking.
I'll be thinking, we're going to call for the vote.
Can I say one thing? Just one second. I totally agree with you, Commissioner Hicks. But I guess I had to go back to what the chairman said, that this application, because it's a parking lot on inside the industrial park, if we did not do it, those same trucks are coming. And, and even if we did do a table in or whatever, it's the same, I mean, truck, the trucks are going to spot A first and then it's going to move to B.
Yep.
And if we say no to B, it does not stop A.
Nope, they just come in.
And I guess that's, that's where I am with it. So thank you for letting me speak again.
You're welcome. It's why we called the vote, please.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Cregmore?
Yes.
Commissioner Eberwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Edwards?
Yes.
Commissioner Hicks?
Yes.
Commissioner Staler?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Rector?
Yes.
And Chairman Singleton?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, the motion is approved by a vote of seven to zero.
Mr. Warrell and Mr. France, this will go to city council on 12/21 with our recommendation for approval. And we will stand adjourned for 15 minutes. I had to call the commission, planning commission meeting back to order. The next item on our agenda is item D, ordinance text amendment OAT 2022-005 flex space. And Mr. Wyman, you read the caption, please.
Yes, sir. Ordinance text amendment OTA 2022-005 flex space initiated by the City of Suffolk for amendments to the code of the City of Suffolk, Chapter 31 Unified Development Ordinance, Article 7 Supplemental Use Regulations, Section 31-725 flex space and Appendix A definitions. The purpose of this text amendment is to update and refine the code of the City of Suffolk, Chapter 31 Unified Development Ordinance due to a change in circumstances. When you act on this request, you will be acting on a resolution to present a report and a recommendation to city council relating to ordinance text amendment OTA 2022-005. Grace is the last player standing, so she will present staff's report.
Yes, thank you. And good afternoon, planning commissioners. As stated, this ordinance text amendment pertains to flex space. So kind of covering some of the issues that we're seeing overall with flex space is the city has experienced a recent increase in the desire to develop industrial warehouse and flex space uses in various geographic spaces and locations. Currently, the definition for flex space is broad and does not contain enough distinction from warehouse and industrial uses. It has been recognized that this is problematic as flex space is permitted by right in the B2 general commercial, OI Office Institutional, CP Commerce Park, M1 Light Industrial, and M2 Heavy Industrial Zoning Districts. Our goal is to establish design criteria to better differentiate between flex space buildings from the size and intensity of larger warehouse buildings. Overall, flex spaces are intended to allow for greater flexibility in terms of businesses that can come and go that are typically oriented towards entrepreneurs and small to mid-sized businesses. Currently, light manufacturing is not defined, and we want those uses to be permitted by this amendment as it is an appropriate use for flex spaces. So one of the first issues just mentioned is that the current flex space definition is very broad. Highlighted in red, it currently reads that flex space buildings are typically located in business or industrial parks and usually have a footprint exceeding 10,000 square feet. And they are usually designed with loading docks to the rear and parking in the front in that they are often treated with a higher quality of architectural finish. It's important to note that the definition does not provide any specific criteria, rather it's just very broad language. Here is an example of some warehouse structures in the City of Suffolk. The image to the left is the Ace Hardware Warehouse located within the Port Logistics Industrial Park along Holland Road. To the right is an image of the Amazon Distribution Site located within North Gate Commerce Park. Overall, warehouse structures are larger and typically constructed for one user, and they support large-scale production. Additionally, these uses are permitted within M1 and M2 zoning district and allows for a maximum building height of 65 feet. Here is an example of a flex space building where Neighborhood Harvest is located. You can see that the scale and massing of the building is significantly smaller from the warehouse structures on the previous slide. This scale of building is smaller and it's also more compatible with other office and business uses that would be allowed in the flex space. Here's another example of flex space located in the North Gate Commons Business Park. Similar to the last example, you can see it is a smaller scale building. This is an example of flex space in the Greenbrier Circle located within Chesapeake. This structure also has a smaller scale when compared to warehouse and industrial structures, and the design overall, again, is compatible with those office and business uses. So overall, staff is proposing to revise the current flex space definition to better differentiate from warehouse structures, add a definition for light manufacturing, and add Section 31-725 to Article 7 in order to establish architectural standards and criteria pertaining to flex space that doesn't otherwise exist. So the proposed amendment to the current flex space definition is highlighted in yellow and includes adding retail and light manufacturing to the uses allowed for flex space as the uses would be appropriate. Additionally, a sentence has been added to limit the size of flex spaces to ensure that the massing of these structures are different from that of a warehouse and industrial uses. The definition now reads with that sentence, in no case shall a single building exceed 100,000 square feet in area or exceed a ceiling height of 28 feet from finished floor. Lastly, the last two sentences that are broad in regards to the design of loading docks and parking area location, as well as the architectural materials, is proposed to be removed as staff believes it would be more appropriate to include this information in the proposed supplemental use regulations for flex space, which I will introduce in a later slide. This is the proposed light manufacturing definition, which is being defined as light industrial uses where all processing, fabricating, assembly, or disassembly of items take place wholly inside an enclosed building and where evidence of operational functions such as noise, dust, or odor are not detectable outside of enclosed buildings. So this is the proposed flex space supplemental standards, which are being proposed and consist of various different design criteria. I will quickly kind of go through those. But something I would like to bring up during the committee on ordinances meeting today, November 15, 2022, it was discussed that the goal of these supplemental use regulations is to apply these design criteria to flex spaces adjacent to residential zoning districts. So you can see where it is bolded above in subsection B. It reads, "Design criteria in addition to general requirements, flex space facilities adjacent to residential zoning districts shall be subject to the following conditions." So for your consideration today, staff is recommending an amendment to the exhibit B that has been supplied to include that language adjacent to residential zoning districts. But just a quick overview of these design criteria listed above. The first is, "Buildings shall have massing compatible with the scale and intensity of developments found in the surrounding zoning districts." The second is, "Buildings shall be oriented to the street with a primary entrance," and "that the rear of the building shall be oriented away from the street and fully screened from any visible right-of-way." The third is, "Blank or mirrored building facades are not allowed." The fourth is, "Front and side facade should appear to have a minimum of 15% transparency." Number five is, "The front and side facades shall use recessions and projections, at least every one-third of the building face, to prevent a single face for the entire length of the facade." Number six is the, number six and seven is the portion of the original definition that was removed that we now have added into these design criteria. Number six is, "All truck parking and loading docks shall be restricted to the rear of the building, and parking located at the front and sides of the building shall be reserved for employee and customer parking only." And the number seven pertains to architectural materials and that the front and side of the building shall include but are not limited to brick or brick masonry veneer, stone, cement paneling, or other material as approved by the planning director. So overall, the proposed amendments and design criteria for flex space would promote aesthetically pleasing structures that are suitable for the zoning districts in which they are located. In that regard, overall, the committee on ordinances originally at their meeting of October 18, 2022 by a vote of four to zero, passed a motion to forward the proposed amendments to the planning commission for consideration. Additionally, as previously stated, the proposed text amendments shown in the attached exhibit, along with the amendment in bold shown above, are presented for your favorable consideration with a staff recommendation for approval. So that concludes my presentation, and I'm available to answer any questions if you have any following the public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brazil. I will now open a public hearing. Is anyone speaking in favor of this request? Hearing none. Is anyone to speak in opposition? Hearing none. Now we're close to public hearing. Commissioners, comments, questions, or motions?
Mr. Chairman, just real quick, if I can. This ordinance text amendment went through several permutations, mostly with just minor changes and additions that resulted from consultation with people that actually developed this type of building. So I feel fairly confident that what staff has presented to the commission as a whole reflects reasonable criteria and will also be accepted by the community that builds these things. So with that, I would like to make a motion for approval of, what do we got going on here? With the, with the amendments. Thank you.
Second the motion.
Second motion.
Okay. Any discussion in the motion? Mr. Wyman, you call the vote, please.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Cregmore?
Yes.
Commissioner Eberwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Edwards?
Yes.
Commissioner Hicks?
Yes.
Commissioner Staler?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Rector?
Yes.
And Chairman Singleton?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, the motion is approved by a vote of seven to zero.
And this will go to city council on 12/12/22 for, with our recommendation for approval.
Yes, sir.
Do we have any old business to be discussed?
No, sir.
Okay. Under the new business, item A, school proffers policy presentation, I think Mr. Wyman has some comments on that?
Yes, sir. Let me grab the clicker real quick. So this is an issue pertaining to the cost per student calculations that the city utilizes as it relates to the cost to advanced capacity for students generated from developments. Oftentimes, you will see proffers associated with a rezoning application that specify X amount will be paid per student generated based on our established generation rates within the Unified Development Ordinance for Development. Procedurally, this is a procedural change and does not require any action. But staff has researched this issue and kind of going back to December 15 of last year, almost a year ago. City council directed staff to take a look specifically at this issue. And there was a public hearing that night on a UDO amendment as it related to our student generation rates. We modified those to align with the census that was conducted as part of a larger school facilities and needs analysis that was commissioned by the city back in 2020. So as a part of that, the public largely accepted the generation rates, thought those were acceptable, really aligned with the student population. However, during that same public hearing, particularly from the development community, there was concern expressed over the high cost of Suffolk's generation rate. And I'll kind of walk you through how we get there currently, but essentially, we were directed to identify some sort of reduction. So over the last year, we've looked into this heavily, researched heavily, and we explored the contribution a Suffolk family makes to the school system through the operating and capital budgets exclusive of enterprise funds annually. Additionally, since the capital projects budget can vary based upon construction projects, we've looked at the five-year average, which was used to assist in a potential reduction calculation. And, oh, it's tough to see up here, so I apologize. I'll look over here. My contacts are failing me after three hours. So you can see, over the last five years, we've looked at the percentage of operations funding and the percentage of capital funding. And we've taken those combined percentages and it averages out over that period of time, that's 62% of the city's overall funding during that five-year period went to the school system in some way for maintenance or construction projects. Currently, the way we identify a cost per student is looking at the level of service required for that school level, identifying what the capacity is or its existing square footage. Generally, if it's in the CIP, we have a number to work with, so we multiply those two to get the required square footage based upon that number of students. And then we have a chart in that school analysis and needs assessment that was done that identifies how much it costs to build a school per square foot. And that's, that's focused on Virginia. Additional weight is given to regional Hampton Road schools, and additional weight is given to the City of Suffolk when we have built schools. We have two fairly new facilities in the Florence Bowser rebuild and Colonel Fred Cherry in North Suffolk. So we have really good recent data to go off of when we come, get to how much a student is. So we've basically been saying, you're creating this many student, or this many students, this is how much a student is based upon that construction. So we've identified the budget as a means to identify a reduction multiplier. So for example, presently, an elementary school student in the City of Suffolk would be $35,955 per student. If, if we were to reduce this by 62% as outlined in the budget here, that would drop to $13,642.21. So, oh, this is also difficult to see. I apologize. Let me go back over here. We surveyed a lot of Virginia localities, as many as would talk to us, about what their proffer policy is. Because obviously, we like to look to our peers when we're making any change of this nature. We like to understand how they operate. And in a nutshell, the localities, not a lot of localities accept cash proffers for, for school generation. They just don't. Of the localities that do, Chesapeake, Fairfax, and Loudon County, those would be the only three up there, two of those in Northern Virginia. They accept school proffers. Chesapeake, I'm actually going to mention on this next slide because they kind of have an established proffer policy, if you will. an established proffer policy, if you will, looks and feels a little like an impact fee. But for Fairfax, they accept, across the board, it's about $12,000 per student. Loudoun County is a little higher than that, very high-growth locality in Loudoun County. And they're also in Northern Virginia. It's important to note that the cost of living for the capital indexes is about 33% higher than Hampton Roads. But on the low end, it's $24,000 in Loudoun County. That increases to $31,000, depending on which development zone in the county you're in. But even on the high end, it's lower than our lowest, which is the elementary school student at almost $36,000. Here's what Chesapeake does. Once again, hard to see, I'm going to have to modify these slides. Basically, for a single-family dwelling in the city of Suffolk, or in the city of Chesapeake, rather, they would pay about $1,600 per dwelling, per student. And I'm going to break down for you what our policy looks like now per dwelling in a moment. But that depends on whether you're building a single-family attached or multifamily, or of course, if you're doing an age-restricted, you'd not be required to pay any sum to the school system. So here are our current costs. Here's our cost per square foot. At the elementary school, that is $265.93. At the middle school, that is $262.91. And I'm going to focus on the high school expansion because that is what is outlined in our capital improvements plan now, but that is a 500-student addition for Nansman River High School at the cost of about $25.5 million. So you have our cost per student. I've outlined what other localities who do this charge. Our elementary school level is about $36,000 per student. That increases at the middle school level to about $42,000. And for that high school expansion, it gets even higher, that's $51,000. With a 62% reduction, you can see we're normalizing and getting close to the more reasonable relative to Fairfax and Loudoun. $13,000 for an elementary school student, $15,000, $16,000 for a middle, and for that high school student, you're at about $19,500. All right. So before I close out here, I'm going to go over a couple scenarios, but these are our generation rates for students. So a single-family detached subdivision in the city of Suffolk would generate elementary school students at .18 per unit. So a 200-single-family unit detached subdivision would generate 36 elementary school students. That reduces at the middle school level to .1, so for each 10, there's one student. That's 20 middle school students, and .13 at the high school level equates to 26 students generated by that development proposal. At a cost per dwelling, and keep in mind, the example that we have from our nearest peer locality, Chesapeake, is about $1,600 per unit for the school system. Presently, if you're impacting the elementary school, middle, and high school in Suffolk, you're talking, for a development of this magnitude, 200 units, about $6,500 per student, or I'm sorry, per unit for the elementary school generation, $4,200 per unit for middle school students generated, and another $6,500 for the high school students generated. If we were to modify that with the 62% reduction as we are proposing, that would drop to $2,500 at the elementary school level, $1,600 for the middle school level, $2,500 at the high school level. Significantly lower than currently, we acknowledge Suffolk tends to be a little high there, but still more than, you know, $1,600 per dwelling in Chesapeake. This is another multifamily scenario. I'm not going to walk you through that, but ultimately, what we've determined is our cost appears relatively high when we look at peer localities. So as a matter of policy, we're recommending that a 62% reduction multiplier be calculated on a five-year basis based on the past five adopted budget. This cost would be reevaluated every five years to account for budget fluctuations and cycles, and we see that, for instance, you go back five years ago, we were finishing up two schools. Obviously, a larger percentage of our funding citywide would go towards those school projects. The last couple of years, we've not had any capital projects of that scale for the school system, but we're about to undertake some. So we think a five-year period to reevaluate this is incredibly reasonable and would allow for those swings in the budget. Some years, we're going to be closer to 50; some years, we may be in the high 70s. But it kind of brings it and normalizes it a little bit. The Committee on Ordinances has been great during this process and has given us a great deal of feedback. We've worked with the Coastal Virginia Building and Industry Association as well, who's provided some input on this. We feel really comfortable in being able to justify this reduction multiplier, and that kind of concludes my presentation for you all this afternoon. I know it's been a long day, but I did note in staff's report here that a motion would be in order. I wanted to let you all know that that would not be necessary with this being a procedural measure. We don't really have the statutory authority to do that, so be advised. No motion is necessary. This is for informational purposes only. To present to you all a recommendation that we have as it relates to procedural changes for that cost per student.
Any questions on Mr. Wyman's presentation?
Kevin, one figure that was tossed out yesterday in the CIP meeting that we attended by the superintendent, so it was 400 per student, square foot, you know, the square footage, $400 per square foot, per student, which was higher than what you got here. But that's for the new construction, and that included, you know, increased cost and everything else that they're looking at in terms of the addition to the northern shores and a new JFK. And so these numbers are probably low if you're going by that.
Understood. I think it's important to note that the numbers we have are the best available right now.
Oh, I understand, but that's what they're looking at right now.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, if I can, I just would like to reiterate one of Mr. Wyman's comments. We sort of went at this thing like going into the dentist office to get just a simple cleaning and ended up with a root canal. It was a long, long process, and I think it's a good example of how we can all work together to come up with a solution. I mean, it was genuinely a problem, and I think the solution that we've come up with will work for everybody. And so I'm very proud to have been a part of that process, even though it was almost a year-long process, but I think ultimately, in the end, I think we got it right.
Move to the status report.
Yes, sir. There was one item, and it was tabled for 30 days, or 60 days, rather. Let me get there. But that would be the ordinance text amendment for minor subdivisions. That's OTA 2020-002. This was a clarification item that would relate to minor subdivisions, but the city council elected to table that for 60 days. That will go back in December.
Commissioners' comments?
Mr. Chairman. Oh, you want to go around the table?
I'm going to go around the table.
What do I do if they steal my fire?
Well, as I mentioned, we were at the CIP, our first run-through of that, and as we mentioned before, we'll have an opportunity next, at the next meeting, I think, they're going to have the booklets for us to look at, review. And I guess, the following meeting, I guess, in January, that's the December meeting, January meeting will be voting on that or recommending, you know, to the final thing. But anyway, we're deep in the, the city is deep in the throes of updating the CIP.
Oh, I'd just like to tell everybody, wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving and safe travels if you're going out of town and watch those roads.
Watch trucks.
Yeah, watch trucks.
I would just like to remind everyone that this is National Literacy Month. You should really be worried that not even 50% of Americans can read on a sixth-grade level. It was at 52% some time ago. It's gone down to under 50%. Folks, get a book, read. I'd also like to congratulate my fellow Planning Commissioner, Mr. Rector, on your new assignment as city councilman. Congratulations on your win, and I'm going to try my best to use the word permutations in the next few weeks.
And I'll second that congratulations.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Hicks. I would like to just say briefly, I went last night to see the Christmas tree that is going, that is on its way up to the nation's Capitol, and I think the city did a great job in orchestrating that thing. The Interior Department of the North Carolina Forestry people did a great job with their presentation. They had little setups where they explained a lot of stuff. They had crafts for the kids. There were some organizations like Four Kids that was explaining some of the things, you know, different things that they do. So my hat's off to the city. It was, as the old saying goes, it was a great show, and we enjoyed it very much.
You have which?
No, no.
You feeling all right?
You feel okay?
He gave me his time. I just, and my fire was stolen somewhat, but I did want to congratulate Mr. Rector on his elevation, and I wrote down here, and congratulations for going from the frying pan into the fire. So that. I noticed also, we have a gentleman sitting out in the audience there, and if I, I'm sorry if I mess your name up, James Robinson, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. James is now, I guess, representing the Suffolk News-Hurl on City Affairs, and I had the opportunity to work with James a couple of weeks ago at a little outside event, and he's a great guy, and I'm sure he's going to have nothing but positive things to say about the Planning Commission. So welcome, James.
Is that it? Thank you, James. And I congratulate Commissioner Rector also, and I would like to just point out that leftover from COVID, any packages presented to us would stay in the basket and not be brought up here with us. My thinking is, if someone bring up a whole packet of stuff, 10 pages, and then they're going to make the presentation, we're going to be looking through those 10 pages and not paying attention to what they have to say. And I think that's, to me, is a distraction to give us something to muddle our minds while they're talking. So are we in agreement that we continue to do that, or do we think we should receive?
I follow my chairman.
Okay. We're going to leave it in the basket for now, and we'll look at it later. If there's nothing else, we stand adjourned, and everybody have a happy Thanksgiving.